City of Chavano Park. Buddy Alman will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Maggie Kautz will lead us in the invocation. If you'd please stand and remove your hats.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, thank you for another absolutely gorgeous day. We know that you are always in charge of these things and that's the way we like it. We ask you for your blessings on all of us that are here and for those in our leadership roles. Would you please help us, stand by us to make sure that we listen to all of the points and we make the best decision in the favor of our city and our citizens. We ask you to look over those of us who very much believe in you and for those who do not, but who are, who have problems in their lives and in their cities and in their countries. We know that you have a lot to do, but we have great faith in you. Thank you, dear Lord. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. This brings us to item number three on our agenda. Jack Miller. Jack, you have three minutes, please. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. My name is Jack Miller. I live at 4839 Dick Gordon in Kirby, Texas. Some of you may know me, some of you don't. Your police chief knows me. I'm best known for being a person who goes after police officers who operate outside of the rules and outside of our laws. And whenever I find these officers, I'm not nice about it. And in fact, I'm horrible until they stop doing what they're doing. I was outside, the reason I'm here talking to you guys today is because I was outside doing some election polling place auditing, much the same as I do with police officers, but I do it with elections officials. And I try to teach them about laws that they otherwise don't know until after I'm done with them. So while I was out here, I noticed a, an issue regarding some signs and the city manager had walked up and I tried, I tried to tell him, look, I'm not going to take any of your time right now. I'll set up a meeting later and we'll address it. But he insisted that we address it now, so he cared. He cared to know right now what the issue was. He didn't remember me, so it wasn't because of who I am. He didn't know me from anybody. I presume that he assumed that I was a citizen or maybe not, doesn't matter. He wanted to know what the issue was. I told him what the issue was and he physically began taking care of that issue and resolved it like that. And I said, you know what? I'm going to come in and let folks know what you did because I believe in giving credit where credit's due. And while I'm here, I'm going to take this opportunity to let you know that your, your police department is not special in my, as far as how I look or what we watch. We watch them too. In fact, over the year, over the past year, we've probably watched 50-plus traffic stops. That's where we film covertly, we watch, when people get searched, so on and so forth. And when the officer's done and they leave, often we get to talk to these people afterwards and we ask them, how did the police treat you? They treat you with respect and dignity? Did you give consent to search? Then we pull reports later to verify. We have nothing to report. So that just, what I'm trying to tell you is that your police department, we would know and I'd be up here if there were a problem and there's not with your police department. So the police and, is who I, who I deal with and I just want to give kudos to your police chief and your officers. And of course, you know, it goes without saying, I believe that your fire folks are angels. And I know you guys are all doing a great job, but specifically as to your police department, it matters. Talk to your police chief. It matters coming from me when I tell you that your police department is setting the standard for law enforcement in Texas. Thank you.
Jack, thank you very much.
Oh, your time is not up. You can keep, continue on.
It's all right. It's all right. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Mike Hahn. Mike, you give us your name and where you live, please.
Mike Hahn, 116 Elm Spring Lane. Happy to be here. The issue I'd like to talk, to talk about is the access from Cliffside to Salado Creek, which we use with a bike, has been very rocky. This is a path, for those who don't know, that was created by Boy Scouts or Eagle Scouts, actually, some six, seven, eight years ago, right Bill?
That's right.
And great job. Unfortunately, to go down there with a bike is tough because of the rocks in the area, et cetera. I reached out to Bill and within a couple of days, we met. We agreed that this could be done without too much of an issue. Bill may want to talk about some improvements, further improvements, but I'm here, one, to bring up the issue and see whether improvements can even enhance the path further. And I'm also here to say thank you, Bill. Your, your reaction time was unbelievable. I'm sure you're busy with many other important things to do. And not only that, but within a few days, we already saw the maintenance people took action and took some of the rocks out and flattened out where it could be flattened. So kudos to you and your team. Wonderful job. If the budget allows, then further enhancements, which maybe Bill could highlight, could certainly improve what could be a quality of life improvement to come down with a bike or even without a bike to this wonderful treasure. Salado Creek is wonderful. And by the way, as we ride our bikes south or north on Salado Creek, we see many communities that have access, sometimes concrete, paved, sometimes otherwise, sometimes with gates, sometimes without a gate. So I think it's, it's high time that we do something for Chavano Park. Thank you.
Mike, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sean. Sean, if you give us your full name and where you live, we appreciate it.
I'm Sean Fitzpatrick. I live at 108 Elm Spring Lane and I drew that beautiful map. The red part is the, is the part that is problematic right now. It is pretty steep and it takes you down from, from Cliffside Drive to the wild trails which are, which are green. And so wherever I put a, a triangle on there, that's, that's a pretty kind of, you might say unsafe place where you don't necessarily want folks who aren't riding very well or who maybe don't ambulate too well to, to be walking around. But at the same time, I have to tell you that every place that there's a, an orange diamond on that or a triangle on that map, except for the little yellow squiggly drainage line, is an exceptionally fun thing to ride on. When COVID hit, biking exploded, especially mountain biking. And City of San Antonio has a pump track now. City of Alamo Heights has a, a pump track with big jumps and everything. It, it's crazy how people have, have really adapted to, to the, the demand for mountain biking. Bentonville, Arkansas is a tourist destination. People fly in from all over the country to go ride mountain bikes there because the Walton Suns have, have just developed this wild trail system out there. And the City of Chavano Park has some of the best technical riding, the orange triangles, between San Antonio and Monterrey, Mexico, whether you guys know it or not. And we lost a lot of it when Huntington got developed, a lot of it. And really the riding on the mountain bike here is so good, it, it's kind of the equivalent of Medicine Wall for climbers. You know, South Texas doesn't have a lot of really good stuff, but that is top-notch. And so let me switch gears here. I think the best money the City of San Antonio has spent has been putting in the linear park systems because people use it. You get out there and there are always people out there exercising and it's wonderful. People need to use this too. And we do need to make that, that trailhead more accessible. I think, and I talked to Bill today, he has a really good idea about how to go about doing it without destroying too much of the, of the wild trails out there because it's, it's something that we really ought to preserve and I'm all for it. If you guys have budget to, to carve in a safer trail for folks to walk down or push their bike down or ride their bike down to get to the, to the paved trail, then I'm all for it. And as I've told Bill, just tell me when, I'll bring my surveyor tape and my chainsaw and we'll help you get a cut.
Thank you, Sean.
And Mayor, can I respond to that real quick?
Yes.
Just make a, this hazard particularly is bad, but it's not really used by that many mountain bikes. That's been pretty much taken care of, but there's a current plan, an idea that would take this trail this way, extend it to there and then from here to there. And that's all within the City of Chavano Park and then that would not eliminate any of those. And we'll be talking more about that to the council during the workshop coming up, the budgets.
Yeah, just as a comment, Sean, for the last 16 years, we've been working with the City of San Antonio to help them to carry through the vision of the linear park. Since Bill's been here, he's met with them on numerous occasions. I've met with Mayor Peak and with Brian from the Parks and, the Parks Department about the trails. In fact, Chavano Park contributed 24 acres to enable them to not have a 10-foot section that they had to push this whole thing through in a bottleneck form, fashion. So Chavano Park likes the trails and we've been a part of the trails and we continue to support the availability of those trails, particularly for our own citizens.
Is that part of the swap?
Part of our swap.
Yeah. Awesome.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeff. Jeff, if you'd give us your full name and where you live.
Yes, good evening. My, my name is Jeff Galt. I live at 303 Red Cedar. And I'm, I'm speaking today on behalf of, or in favor of, item number 8.7. I think Chavano Park has a justified reputation of being a low-crime community, but it may not be, you may not be aware, but we are subject to a, a, an epidemic of crime that's been going on now for about five years that largely goes under the radar and it's affecting our US mail system. So in the Chavano Creek, I'm the current chairman of the homeowners association for Chavano Creek. We have about 15 locations where mailbox clusters are, are situated. Over the last five years, half of all of those clusters were, were vandalized, the mail stolen. And the post office replaced them with new, largely impervious to, to being vandalized, new boxes. But suddenly in this last year, they decided, or last year or so, that they will no longer, that is, the US post office will no longer replace the boxes that are vandalized. Since then, almost every week now, we've had at least one case, typically 16 mail slots opened and vandalized. My neighbor across the street had her, her outgoing checks stolen. You might think, well, what's, what's the harm in that? Well, the harm is that they take the numbers off the bottom of the check, create their own checks, and they wrote then subsequent checks on her account, which she didn't discover until months later when reconciling her account. I've done a, an inventory of all of the remaining boxes that are still subject to being vandalized. And it's, there are, and I, and I've submitted a list, there's about eight different locations requiring something like 15 new cases that would upgrade all of our mailboxes to the current state-of-the-art. It's important to know that none of the new boxes have been vandalized since they've been installed. So it's really imperative that we replace these existing old susceptible boxes. And to further drive home the point, another member of our community, whose own mailbox was vandalized just last weekend, is prepared to also talk.
Thank you very much, Jeff. You know, Bill has been very proactive with this. We've written, Bill and I have both rewritten, probably four or five letters to the postmaster locally and the postmaster for the United States. And the answer was, how come you can't make better mailboxes? Fortunately, they're getting a little bit better than they used to be. We are concerned about this. Chief will tell us that it wasn't until the last legislative session that we had the authority to actually enforce mail theft issues. And so since then, we have been involved in the process and, you know, we hope that, we hope to discuss some good solutions here this evening, but thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Dale. Dale, if you give us your full name and where you live, appreciate it.
Excuse me. Hi, I'm Dale Bond. I live at 307 Cinnamon Oak. I'm a neighbor of Jeff's, as he mentioned. I serve on the HOA board with him too, so I'm a little more familiar with the issue than most of our neighbors. But I'm also here as a victim. Our, our unit has been broken into twice now. So this is, I think I just want to reiterate, this isn't like a one-off or a two-off. This is happening consistently and it's recurring. And so far, we've been fortunate that our, our unit can still be salvaged to be functional because once it is not functional anymore, you have to go to the post office to get your mail. It sounds like a minor inconvenience, but I'm sure we've all dealt with the post office. It is not minor inconvenience, it's a serious inconvenience. A couple of words to follow up on what Jeff said about the new units. Just want to clarify, what he mentioned about the new units is not just our experience in Chavano Creek. A lot of that information comes in visiting with our own postman, who's familiar with the units, you know, on his route and, and probably more broadly than that even. But in visiting with him, he's made it clear that these new units have not been broken into anywhere. So this isn't just our little isolated community. These new units are substantially stronger and have yet to be vandalized that at least our postman is aware of. So anyway, we've, we on the board have taken steps to, to get proposals and things like that, have these remaining boxes replaced. But, you know, we feel that beyond our HOA, this is an issue for the city. As Jeff mentioned, we are very fortunate to be a low-crime city and we appreciate that. That's one reason we live here. We appreciate the job that the police officers do. We like seeing them in the community. But, you know, these crimes take minutes and it, you know, it's hard to enforce. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this brings us to item number four, city council comments. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recognize the problem that was brought up before us today. I'm sure we're going to be working on it to some resolution, we hope. I'd like to remind everybody, it's voting season. Please exercise franchise. An awful lot of good men and women lay down their lives so that you can go in and vote for the person of your choice. Thank you.
Pete.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'd like to recognize somebody who is celebrating the 25th year of public service in Chavano Park this year. He was first elected to city council in 1999. He has served in multiple positions in our city government, including nine years as mayor. I think many of our residents don't know or have a full appreciation for the time, the talent and the effort that our mayor puts in to making Chavano Park a great place to live. He serves our city without regards to compensation, but rather from a calling of service to the community. As the mayor, we'll be, we'll be making a proclamation recognizing this week as Employee Appreciation Week. I think it is only fitting that our mayor should be recognized for his service to our community. In that light, I would like to present the mayor with a six-figure compensation. There you go, Mayor.
That is sterile.
Thank you very much.
Oh, that's wonderful.
As you see those superheroes, Mayor, you are one of the superheroes of this community.
Okay, it's sterile.
And as, as a tax attorney, the benefit of this compensation is there, is tax-free, Mayor.
Very good. I, I do observe that it looks like Lee is going to be Captain America, that, that you look like you're Thor. I get to be Superman. I do really appreciate that symbolism. Conrad, you get to be Batman. Captain, then Maggie, you. No, no, that's not Flash. That's the guy with Iron Man. That's Iron Man. Maggie, you get to be Iron Man.
I can do it.
And Buddy, you're the Hulk. You're the Hulk. So if y'all, if any of you are offended or would like to move higher up on the superhero categories, talk to Pete because he chose the superheroes that each one of you would represent. No, they are, they are permanently affixed. They are permanently affixed. Thank you very much. Conrad.
Well, you know. I'm really happy to see everybody here. They came to speak to us and tell us your concerns or, you know, praises. So thank you for showing up and speaking your mind, whatever it is.
Maggie.
We're really thrilled about praises. We weren't expecting that, but hey, we'll take it. But thank you all for coming here. It's your input that helps us decide what we do up here. If we don't get input, you know, we, we need to go out and find you somewhere. So we really appreciate you all being here this evening. Thank you.
Buddy.
Welcome, everybody. It's good to see a lot of new faces here and also want to congratulate Lee, Conrad and Maggie on their wins. Are there hard-fought battles for office and hopefully you'll get the same praise that we all got.
Yeah, we did.
That's right. That's right.
Thank you.
I, I'm not expecting any one of you to get a six-figure reward. Brings us to item number five, presentations, commendations and announcements. Item 5.1, proclamation recognizing February the 26th through March the 1st, 2024 as Employee Appreciation Week. Whereas the City of Chavano Park residents are served daily by public servants, the unsung heroes who perform the jobs that keep our city working. And whereas municipal employees make great contributions to their communities by serving in such areas as crime prevention, fire protection, infrastructure and utility services and administration. And whereas the municipal employees of the City of Chavano Park are committed to exhibiting the highest standards of excellence, dedication, creativity and skills. And whereas, day in and day out, these employees provide quality and diverse services required and expected by the citizens of our local government with efficiency, effectiveness, enthusiasm and integrity. And whereas without these public servants, at every level, continuity of services would be impossible and the City of Chavano Park recognizes the dedication and talents of municipal employees as well as the value of the service they consistently render at all levels. Now therefore, I, Robert Warner, Mayor of the City of Chavano Park, on behalf of the entire city council and citizenry, hereby proclaim February the 26th through March the 1st, 2024 as Employee Appreciation Week in the City of Chavano Park. Let's give all of our employees a big round of applause. Okay, we're now to item number six. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that will, item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately at the end of the regular agenda. Do we have a motion to accept and/or approve items 6.1 through 611? We have a motion from Lee. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Maggie. There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion carries 5-0. Item number seven, city manager's report. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council will only be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Consistent with each item, items discussed will generally occur at the end of the regular agenda. Do we have a request to pull any of items 7.1 through 7.6? There being no request, we are now to item number eight, regular agenda items. Item 8.1, presentation, discussion, Chavano Park Commercial and Residential Development Semiannual Presentation, Bitter Blue. Daryl, please let, let him know that we're sorry that he is unable to make it.
Good evening. Been a while since we've been here. Hopefully we'll have some more plating coming up this year and be in front of you here soon. I want to introduce David Wright. He's joined Bitter Blue to assist on commercial, a lot of due diligence, once we have moved something into contract, helping push that contract, contract through with all the engineering, et cetera. So if you see David here, he's part of the team and working on the commercial side of things. Any questions that I don't have the answer to tonight, we'll write it down and get you a reply if there's something that needs a little more specifics. I'm going to jump right into it using this guy. Curtis, thank you for setting up everything. The residential, so residential is slowly, and when we say, the, the last bullet point here, all planned residential development in Chavano Park is complete, technically it is, but there's still another two to four, might even be five years of development and construction of the lots on the ground. This just means that the overall developments are generally, all the horizontal work is in and now it's up to, you know, individual lots either being developed, being entitled and actually vertically going up. But the, under the notes here, Huntington Unit 5, the last unit is complete. Pond Hill Unit 1 Garden Homes are all sold. Pond Hill Unit 2 Loving Homes are sold. Average sold price is $675,000 for those homes. And then again, just reiterating, you know, all planned residential development, we don't have new subdivisions going in. It's finalizing the homes in the current subdivisions. Some of those lots have been sold, well, they've been sold, but some folks haven't built yet. Some folks may decide to sell their lots. Some are developer-owned. The developer may decide, hey, we're going to go vertical with these homes. So again, with Mr. Hill, likely, again, another two to five years before the lots are developed and even after that, there are going to be some lots that are still going to be, need to be built to contribute to your tax base here. I'm going to, example of Huntington Estates, Unit 5. Again, you'll drive through that unit and you'll see lots that haven't been gone vertical yet. But again, all the infrastructure is technically in there.
One, one point on that one. That was the last unit that was platted. There's 31 lots in there and just, there's only two of them that actually have construction started and they're just about halfway through. So there's 29 complete lots that have been sold, but not yet developed and that will be further, you know, added in that two to four years that Daryl's talking about.
Yes. Just a large, this is an up-to-date aerial of Huntington, showing you the breadth of, you know, Huntington and how it's developed there with the last unit. Pond Hill Garden Villas Unit 1, you've all seen this, that is all completed. Here's Unit 2, and this is a little bit of an older aerial with an overlay. Here is what it looks like right now, especially the upper left. You can see the developed lots and the ingress egress and just a nice little pocket community there. I'm going to move into the commercial and as in previous commercial presentations, we're going to cover some areas right outside of Chavano Park, just so you know what's going on around Chavano Park also, proximity to Chavano Park. This is outside City of Chavano Park. Well, one track is within, the 2.2 acres there, so we're pre-planning that for retail slash medical. We're working site plans. That site is very challenging. We have drainage, we have topo, but it's a great site. And, you know, Mr. Denton and the partners are like, find a use for this. And, you know, we have a lot of different irons in the fire on that 2.2 acres. It is at a signalized intersection. What's interesting about that, we have a curb cut within the City of Chavano Park and then we're going to have a curb cut on Dezavala in City of San Antonio. So a little bit interesting there, working through all that. As far as Chavano Ridge, let me see if we have, Chavano Ridge. As far as Chavino Ridge, let me see if we have, Chavino Ridge, see the pre-planning commercial office behind Walmart. We just received a plating proposal today from Pape Dawson. We're looking at five lots. That's the last major track available in this area. And we have a big detention pond in the back that we had to do. And Taco Bell's operational, the car wash is operational. So, you know, we have about nine more acres there to sell. And then the CVS, I'm sure you've driven by, the CVS went dark. And they're, the group, we have no ownership in that. That was sold many, many years ago as an Eckers. And so CVS terminated their lease. They had, they terminated. So that will be some other use, you know, sometime down the line here. This is the 2.2 acres that we're currently just pre-planning, trying to work with topo and drainage on that one. Just a couple, just draft site plans with some trees. We're going to shift back up now. This is city of Chavino Park proper. There you see Phase 2 Pond Hill Garden Villas, basically all built out. We are still looking for a restaurant user, someone that could maximize highest and best use on the 2.5 acres. So we're still at it there. We just haven't found the right use or economics. It is expensive to develop while keeping the trees and keeping that look and feel there of what we're looking for. Pond Hill Road West, Merritt Coffee, everyone's doing real well here. Soul Fitness is moving out here at the end of the month. So we are looking to release that, re-lease that space where Soul Fitness is. You can see the, this is a newer aerial. You can see the intersection with the signalization, et cetera. Just jumping right across the way here, again, this is a newer aerial. You can see the construction with Loop 1604. We're working different prospects for the 4.45 and the two acres behind Huntington Square. I'd characterize the commercial market right now as cautiously optimistic. You have to have, it's generally end-user driven. You have higher interest rates. Construction costs have come down a little bit, but not substantially. We're probably never going to see a return to pre-COVID pricing with construction. Engineering is very expensive. We were doing, looking at old engineering proposals and, you know, six years ago, they were half of what they are now. You know, with plating and drainage and everything else. So just generally across the board, it's more expensive to develop. So, but we have patient partnerships to find the right users here. This is example, 22 acres. We're working on different concepts here. And I don't have the pointer, but between, behind, I'm sure everyone's familiar with this track, but behind Huntington Square, this is the future, this is a future ingress egress that we've already built or developed right here. And then this will generally, let's see if we, this is a general schematic of how this will likely lay out. There's only one spot here on 1604 due to drainage and topo where you're going to have an ingress egress onto that 1604 access road. And so this requires fill, drainage, stormwater. And we're, we're trying to bring this one to life to see if we can get some commercial users in the back and some more retail-ish users that need that 1604 frontage. But it's definitely a work in progress. And this was example of a, of a big box user there. Nothing in stone. It's just, we're going to be going through a lot of these concepts to find something that fits here. Huntington Commercial, we've had a lot of folks that are now coming back to the office on the tenant side with workers. But we still have vacancy here and we're working really hard to get this filled. Okay? Key thing on commercial like this is having the finished-out product ready for people to move in. Folks, when, when these smaller tenants, 5,000 square feet and under, they want to move in, they don't pre-plan a year, two years ahead. Their lease is coming up in five months. They need a place to move. So we're working through the numbers for the finish out. This is a good example. This shows Huntington Commercial. Lot of the same folks are here. Seasons Memory Care purchased the previously named Bader House. So Seasons Memory Care is new here. Napier Park, we have basically the frontage available, A, B, and C. Those are just lines on a piece of paper. And we have commenced with drainage along the frontage here, coming down the property line, and then Lot 10. And it will daylight here into the creek. This drainage is all the result of back in the day when we did the Chavino assisted living here. There's a swale, but it all, it all used to just sheet flow through here. Now we have a earthen channel that takes it along the frontage, brings it around, and daylights it. Because we now have development on this track and you just can't have, you know, stormwater sheet flowing across like that. So it's being channelized. And then as we develop the frontage, we'll either, users will either put that underground, they'll keep it, or they'll put box culverts, put parking over. But that's underway right now. So if you see equipment there on the frontage, et cetera, that's what's happening in front of Napier Park. Okay? Rogers Ranch Ridge Line, this is outside of Chavino Park, but it gives you an idea of what's happening as far as rooftops. We have the Caroline at Rogers Ranch. They should start pre-leasing if they haven't already, started pre-leasing. So that's the second multifamily on the north side of 1604. And then we're planning the future commercial, the 23 acres. Lots of topo, trying to figure out the best way to approach that from a development standpoint. Likely food, beverage, service there versus office. More of a lifestyle, mixed use versus a 30,000 square foot office building, you know, along that area. But the rooftops help Chavino Park on that north side for hopefully getting pad users or folks that could generate some sales tax, like furniture, et cetera, on the south side in Chavino Park. Rooptops help. And that's bringing it to a close, you know, as we go around the horn there with all the land around Chavino Park.
Thank you, Daryl. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Pete?
Daryl, as always, I very much appreciate these updates. They're very, very well done. But I do have a question on the Pond Hill West, one of the first slides that you showed.
Yeah. We. Let's see if we can, oop, bear with me here. Right here? I think it's back a couple more. Just tell me where.
So the question has to do with the, the restaurant spot you were, you were potentially looking at?
Right here. Right, bear with me. Right here, the 2.85 acres.
Right. So the lake that's there, the pond that's there, is that associated with the, the property of the restaurant? If the restaurant goes there?
Okay.
So what's the ownership of that?
That's a draw. That is kind of a hook there. Not that they're going to have paddle boats out there. But when we do, like, when we were looking, this, several years ago with a barbecue, well, with Two Bros, I'll be very transparent, was, it's a very cool overlook right there. Like huge oak trees, like just a killer, like where you could have decomposed granite, kind of a natural feel and look, and have an overlook onto that pond. That pond is not constant level. It, it could go dry. But generally speaking, that pond, Mr. Hill can always correct me, is, gets its water from the other side of 1604. That it goes under and fills, you know, as part of the drainage and stormwater. But the, the hook there is that 2.85 acres, it could be one or two users, but it could be a really, really cool destination with kind of a soft touch. We're not talking a Willie's Ice House where it'll just take all the trees out. And there you have a Willie's Ice, and I'm using that as just an example.
So I guess, I guess my question is, would Bitter Blue remain ownership of that?
Yes. Yes. The, the 2.85 acres, it is a preference of the partnership to remain the owner of that. So it'd be a build-to-suit, like say where the partnership builds the structure and then they lease it, or it's a ground lease. And say the restaurant user comes in, builds the improvements, and it's a, again, a ground lease. Open to all options.
Maggie?
Is that a, a nice place for that boutique hotel we've been looking for with a rooftop bar overlooking the pond in Chavino Park?
I don't. That overlooks another pond in Chavino Park, Maggie, on the 22 acres.
On the 22 acres?
Yeah, that is this.
Any boutique hotel?
Right.
In here.
So this is where there's been discussion of a potential hospitality is on the 22 acres, just a couple clicks east here.
Okay.
Where you have, you know, Starbucks and whatnot, and then just east of there.
Okay.
And there's some drainage, a pond where you could do some walking trails and have kind of a softer touch there.
Okay.
But that's, the 22 acres is where we're focused, where if we could find a hospitality user.
All right. And my other question?
Yes.
Is you'd mentioned, uh, vertical building. Are you, is that, does that phrase mean you're going to start building there? It does not mean townhomes or apartments or anything?
No, vertical is just a term. Say you have a residential lot that is empty right now. That's just, you know, you drive by through Huntington and you see a lot there. Vertical just means building, uh, could be a residential.
Okay, you have to start building something.
Exactly. Exactly.
Thank you.
Good question.
Buddy?
Uh, Daryl, what is the status on the future lights on, on Lock Hill Selma? Any more talk of that on, especially on Indian Woods coming out?
Okay, that's a good, okay. Let me, let me, let's touch on that. It's a good question. Let me go back. Cause I was involved in that.
Because now, uh, Chavino Creek, we're seeing more and more traffic where you can't get out of Chavino Creek, or especially around 4 to 5 o'clock.
Let me show you. This is, this is a very good question. So are you talking about this intersection right here by Basis?
Yes, I'm talking about that one there. And then, and then actually Heebner and Lock Hill Selma on the backup of traffic in front of the apartments across the street on the, on the west side.
Backup here?
Yeah.
Okay, that we would not, we're, the partnership is sold out of land up there. So the partnerships just are no longer involved with anything, anything beyond Basis going up to Heebner. Bitter Blue doesn't have any more involvement.
But are we going to, are they going to maintain that flashing yellow light there?
Okay. So what's going to happen here, and as part of one of those very large engineering proposals I just told you received, is as we plan this eight acres right here, okay, it's plus or minus eight acres. There's a very expensive TIA called Traffic Impact Analysis that will have to be approved by city of San Antonio. It will likely address, it'll likely address this intersection. It will likely address this intersection. What happened here, when we did Basis of San Antonio, and I hope I'm not giving you too much info, but Basis of San Antonio, there was not a light, a light was not mandated here at Indian Woods and Lock Hill Selma. The TIA did not mandate a light there. But a city of San Antonio reviewer insisted to put the infrastructure in with a flashing yellow light, which confuses everybody. You drive there, you're like, am I stopping? Am I caution? What, what is going on with the flashing yellow light? What, all the infrastructure with that flashing yellow light is in for full signalization. So all the conduit, everything is, is pre-piped basically for a full signal. I imagine with this next TIA that a full signal will be mandated there. Does that help answer your question?
Not really, but I mean, I know it's coming, but.
There's, so how do I answer? I'm just, I want, I want to answer your question, but right now it has, it's a flashing signal. It's a flashing yellow light. But this next round of TIA, when it shows more development coming on this area, will likely trigger this to be a full intersection. Okay? So you're probably a year and a half, two years out. And those are now, signals are now over, even with the infrastructure in, is probably at least 500,000 for that. You know, once they put the cameras, radar, everything else on it. Or make the developer do that.
Buddy, part of your question, I think, went to what about all the traffic that's backing up at Heebner and Lock Hill?
Right.
That there is a gigantic queue going east-west on Heebner. And it, do y'all have any influence over the city of San Antonio on the synchronization of that light to move that traffic through there more quickly? Because it queues up all the way down the hill to the post office, which has got to be almost a half a mile away. And it queues up about a half a mile going past the entrance to Chavino Creek. Yeah. And so if there is some type of influence that you can exert, and if, if I can sign a letter for you that says we support whatever you can do there. You know, David, we would be happy to help y'all in that process.
Okay, we'd bring that up with Pape Dawson.
Okay.
Okay, we'll have a meeting with Pape Dawson Wednesdays at 3:00. And we'll bring that up with them. I might have to get a few more specifics, but that's something they could look at.
Okay. On the 2.85 acre track, there is a, at one time I heard it was a landfill, and another time I heard it was a drainage easement that was there between the 2.8, 2.85 acre track and the Exxon.
You're correct.
Is there, is there anything that can do, that can be done there, you know, placemates, something like that, that we would want to have in that property? Or is it just a floodplain and it is lost to time?
Lost to time, most likely. As we go into more planning, but that has been, excuse me, that has been discussed. It's a sliver right here. Et cetera, you know, right here. And I'm imagining now even with, with more stringent stormwater demands with San Antonio, that it's even, they would probably love to even widen that more. Again, I know this is Chavino Park. I'm just saying on the other side. But it will be something, if, if improvements could be made there, we did look at parking. And there's very certain, when you're in a floodplain, like parking can be, you can have water like a foot up to the, you know, foot up to your wheel well. Or, I mean, there's very specific items there. Of course, you don't want to have a restaurant and then you have a heavy rain and people have to wade through a foot of water to get to their cars. But we will look at that. I don't have an answer for you this evening, but I know, and we were also looking at potentially putting, we have to do water quality here. And that could be more of a natural vegetation for water quality, an earthen basin versus what you have called vertical concrete walls. Like, vertical concrete walls are like what they have at Costco.
Yeah.
And so we're trying to see if there might be an engineering solution that could kind of soften that area there. And water quality might be one of them.
Okay. Final thing, when I was driving through Huntington today to look at where Unit 5 is going in, lots of trees have been, lots of cedars have been taken down so that you can see the improvements and, and the wonderful live oaks that are in there. One of the things that I noticed is that there has been some deformation in some of the streets in Huntington already. I mean, like, they're collapsing. And they're not going to be very happy with this when we turn this over to them. And they've had some of those streets that have already on, this is, this isn't on the stuff that was completed years ago on the west side as you enter. This was on the roads that have been relatively unused on the east side. And it's a couple of places. Just a note, because we will be talking to those people five years from now, and they'll be asking us why we didn't talk about it five years earlier.
We have a great group of project managers, young folks, very enthusiastic. And I will bring this up in our engineering meeting. And they're, they're out here almost every day. And we'll ask them, because it very well could be failures of asphalt. I don't know if it's asphalt or the curbing, but things happen. And if it's got water, it's going to fail.
No, no, y'all, y'all have been very good. When we were first, when Chavino Creek first came into the city, we worked with y'all on Chavino Creek issues for a number of years. And, you know, some of those have still persisted to today, but y'all were very accommodating. We did appreciate that.
But we'll, just to recap, we have the traffic signal here. We'll talk, you know, I'll relay this info to Mr. Denton about the traffic signal. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about that adjoining area for the 2.85. bit about that adjoining area for the 2.85 acres, and then we'll talk about Huntington, about, you know, potential, lack of a better word, street failures there, or maintenance on what needs to happen.
Okay. Uh, any more questions or comments? Bill, do you have anything that you'd like to address to Darrell at this time?
I'm good.
Darrell, thank you and David very much for being with us. David, it's always great to be with you. Uh, Bill and I have had many opportunities to meet with you, you're a great member of the team now, we're so happy to have you onboard with, with Mr. Denton, and we're very sorry that he couldn't be with us this evening.
Well, thank you, and hopefully we'll be up in front of you with some plats this year.
Great.
So, the year is young for right now.
Thank you, Darrell.
Thank you very much, Darrell. Uh, brings us to item 8.2, Discussion Action, Freeland Turk Associates Street Assessment and Phase 1C Recommendations. Tom?
Can I just start out by saying?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Um, a few months ago, come on up, Tom, if you want, but a few months ago, we went out for qualifications for some long call engineer firms, and then, uh, Freeland Turk was one of the firms that we selected. And then as we went through the street analysis options, uh, we had some discussions with Tom, and then we brought to you before a requirement, task order draft, which we would then, um, work with this engineering firm to provide you recommendations, and that's what Tom has done. But if you haven't met Tom Turk, that's Tom, and, uh, he's here to give us a brief.
Thank you very much for having me here this evening. Uh, my name is Tom Turk, co-founder of Freeland Turk Engineering Group. Uh, my, uh, business partner Gary Freeland is back at the office getting work done. Uh, we don't let him out very much, because he's the, he's the brains of everything that's happened, so we keep him, we keep him there. Anyway, um, Bill handed us an, an, an assignment, and I'm here to talk about what that assignment was and what we came up with. So, uh, what, uh, Bill asked us to do is address approximately about $1 million in HUD funds that are available for street improvements. This is left over from, uh, a grant that the city received, uh, some time ago. Uh, they asked us to, uh, look for eligible needs, uh, in three neighborhoods, Old Chavano West, Chavano Estates, and Chavano Creek. I say eligible because federal funds, in the federal fund grant world, maintenance is not eligible for funding. It, it has to be basically street reconstruction. So, um, Bill needed from us some options, and then wanted us to make our recommendation. So what we did was we conducted a, uh, pavement condition, uh, assessment of those three neighborhoods, uh, which were comprised of basically hot mix asphaltic concrete, or typical asphalt, and then, uh, many of the streets in the other two neighborhoods, uh, have a chip seal on them. I've got a, a very long list of, of, uh, things that are wrong with your pavement, uh, but I gotta stop here and say that, uh, your pavement's over 30 years old, and it's doing wonderful. It is in fantastic condition for its age, it needs some work, uh, but I, just because I have a long list of, of things that are, that I saw, doesn't mean the pavement's not in good condition, because it is. Um, some of the more prevalent, uh, cracking that we saw, go to the next slide there, uh, was something called, what I call blocked cracking, uh, which is a combination of longitudinal and transverse clack, cracking. And like, like, uh, policemen who solve crimes, city, civil engineers go out and we look cracks, and, and that's, that's how we know kind of what's going on. Uh, block cracking is, is very simple, it's pavement fatigue, it's 30 years old. It's been out in the hot Texas sun for 30 years, uh, it's been driven on for 30 years, and it's sitting on top of a spongy clay for 30 years, and it's just starting to show, uh, the fatigue that, that it endures. Next slide. Uh, this is pretty common, uh, this is settlement around manholes, basically, a manhole's a very hard structure, uh, and what's around it is relatively soft and moves around, uh, so when something that's soft moves around something that's hard, cracks form. So it's, it's very typical in your, in, in this neighborhood. Next slide, uh, rutting and alligator cracking, this is typically an indication that you have base failure. Uh, it can be from, uh, poor subgrade, or it can be from, uh, just heavy traffic, traffic loading. Next slide. Uh, chip seal stripping, uh, the chip seal that, uh, exists out there was done in 2004, it's about 20 years old, and, uh, it's holding up amazingly well for being on the ground 20 years, but it's, it's showing its age, it's showing its wear, and in some places, like you see here, it's, it's beginning to strip, and it, it doesn't look all that well, but, uh, still performing very, very well for its age. Go ahead. Uh, we wanted to, uh, figure out a little bit more about what the pavement looked like and what might be going under, on underneath it, so we worked with Johnny and his crew, and they dug us, uh, six, what we call potholes, using their vacuum truck. Uh, and we dug, uh, through the asphalt, through the base material, and, and down into the subgrade, just to kind of see what was there. And in general, what we found was about two inches of hot mix asphaltic concrete, uh, we found about eight inches of flexible base material, the gravel, uh, and we found basically a, kind of a fat clay subgrade. Uh, we did find something else that was kind of interesting. Um, the three potholes that you see on the lower right of your screen had the, the darker base material that you kind of see on that picture on the left. The, the other three potholes, uh, potholes 1, 2, and 3, uh, had this lighter base material. Now, this lighter base material was hard to dig out, it was well graded, which means it had a good percentage of large, medium, and small aggregate, it was very hard. Uh, the base material on the left was not well graded, it had some aggregate in it, but it wasn't well graded, so, so it, it doesn't interlock as well, and it had more, uh, clay in it, and more fines. So it is not as strong as the base material on the right. And, um, so what we found was that the, the streets in the lower left, Post Oak Way and, and Cinnamon Oak, were deteriorating faster, probably because of the weaker base material. There's other factors, and that's, that's not the absolute determining factor, but it was a big clue for us. So that was kind of something we, we, we found it was, it was a good exercise to do. Next. So, uh, in the three neighborhoods that, uh, Bill asked us to look at, these were the candidate streets that we came up with, that we thought should be reconstructed using HUD funds. So it's Post Way from Lock Hill Selma to Cinnamon Oak, and that's one entrance into, uh, Chavano Creek. Cinnamon, Cinnamon Oak from Heebner, Heebner to Post Oak Way, and that's another entrance. Uh, and then Post Oak Way from Blackjack Oak to Duran Oak, that's kind of a continuation of Post Oak Way. Same thing with Cinnamon Oak from Trinity Oak to Princeton Oak. Uh, Elm, um, Elm Spring Lane, which is in Old Chavano West, and then portions of Turkey Creek from Honeybee, Honeybee Lane to the creek, and then, uh, Arrow Mound Lane, which I believe is a cul-de-sac. So we, we identified those streets as possible candidates for reconstruction using the HUD funds. Next slide. Uh, so we only had about a million dollars to work with, uh, and we knew that Post Oak Way, uh, from Lock Hill Selma to Cinnamon Oak had already been identified in your bond program as a street that needed to be reconstructed, so that was kind of a given. So we had to find another project at around $600,000, uh, to, to get to that million dollar figure. Uh, and what we did is we, we picked, uh, Cinnamon Oak from Heebner to Post Oak Way. Uh, that totaled somewhere around a million dollars. We're addressing the high use entrances off of Heebner and Lock Hill Selma. They're contiguous projects, so we have, if we have a contractor that comes in and constructs them, he doesn't need to pick up and relocate his equipment and start working another, he can do it all at one time. Uh, and what we're proposing is something that I call replace in place. So it's basically reconstruction between the existing curbs. So we'll take out all the asphalt, all the base material, we'll, um, stabilize the subgrade all between the, the curbs, the curbs will stay, driveways will stay, minimum, just minimum disruption to everything behind the curb, so they get in, out, and out pretty quickly. Uh, next slide. So, that was the first assignment that Bill gave us, giving you some recommendations, happy to answer any questions that you might have about what I've presented on.
Okay, Bill, do we want to receive the second part of this, or do you want to entertain questions right now?
Yeah, just to make sure I'm clarifying, so that, we, we have about 4 million, we, that we're going to get. We haven't submitted the grant, because we're trying to make sure we have council's approval for this, uh, leg of it. And this probably, uh, is Tom, we've been working closely with Tom, but as we, he's presented it, it's a good candidate because it's reconstruction, it was included in the, uh, bond, the, the, the application for the grant, for the, because we asked for 15 million. We, we said we had 15 millions of requirement, we asked for 5, they gave us 4. But this also is a thorough way, because people cut in from Heebner up to Post Oak Way, then take it, uh, uh, west to, along, uh, Post Oak Way to Lock Hill Selma, and they work through that. It's, I mean, it's not a very large cut through, but there are people, including myself, who cut through there occasionally. So, uh, that's, that part of it, and just to, as you take action later on to approve this, then that's gonna allow us to submit that application, hopefully at the end of this week, to HUD to finalize that. This was a missing piece. And the second part is, just to kind of shape everything, we had a $10 million bond, we think that's gonna come in somewhere around 8 million, and then what are candidates that we can best use that 2 million for, and that's what I, I, which is more maintenance, which will then allow us to extend the life of certain subdivisions, so that we can delay their, uh, more extensive maintenance until 15, say 10, 15 years. We've got to do something to it now to get it to that point, and that's what we've asked him to do, is give us recommendations for how to best use that, and we don't know what it is exactly, 2 million, 2.5, 2, 1.8, that's still to be determined. Go ahead, Tom.
So, so Bill, uh, just to make sure that everybody on council knows, staff's recommendation is that the cut through from Heebner to Lock Hill be completely reworked. So Post Oak to Cinnamon, Cinnamon Oak out to, um, and then Cinnamon Oak over to Heebner.
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, Buddy, you, you actually drive on one of these streets every day, at least now that you're in town.
I actually do.
Yeah. Uh, any observations about this?
Yeah, the traffic is continuing to be, it keeps on, uh, increasing exponentially, especially with the, uh, construction that we've had on Northwest Military Drive, uh, with the closures on 1604, uh, we have a lot of people cutting through, and with, with the, with Basis, since it's opened, we have a lot of people cut through. Uh, I mean, that, that is a major thoroughfare now. And, uh, the, the streets are, uh, crumbling. Uh, we see, uh, along the curb side, there's, uh, little pits, there's little, uh, shallow puddles all over the place, especially around the manholes. Uh, manholes, uh, on Cinnamon Oak are pretty bad. Uh, they are falling, in fact, I'm surprised some of the cars haven't gotten, uh, damaged, uh, because of the cuts, uh, near the, uh, manholes. So, I, I know that, uh, there's limited funds, um, and looking through proposal and everything, but I think the way that we're scheduling everything, and the way we're looking and forecasting money for the bonds and our streets and everything, that we do need to look at spending the money wisely, and, uh, with the increase of additional 150,000, I think it'll prolong the life of the streets, uh, on using the, what is it, HMAC 5?
That's, that's the next topic.
On number 2, on the next one? Yeah, I think that, uh, it's, it's for the betterment of the community, uh, and then it'll, it'll at least Band-Aid us until we get to the next bond issue, which could be 10, 15, 20 years from now.
Okay, okay, anybody, anybody, Pete?
So Tom, you showed the two potholes that y'all went and drilled, and you said in one of them, the subsurf, subgrade was solid, and on the other one, it was, it wasn't well graded on the bottom. So, does, would there be a difference in how you handle that? I mean, what you said is when you go in and do these streets where the subgrade was poor, you're gonna tear up the street, you'll tear up the subgrade and re-put in new subgrade, and then come on top. Where the grade, or the subgrade is solid, would there be a different approach?
All right, so let's, let's get our terminology.
Okay.
Straight, so everybody understands. The stratum is your two inches of hot mix asphalt.
Right.
You have about eight inches of what we call flexible base, which is your gravel.
Okay.
And then you have subgrade below that, and that subgrade is, is a, kind of a sticky, spongy clay material. What we would do is we would excavate the asphalt and the flexible base down to that subgrade, and then we would mix in lime to the subgrade, stiffen it up, recompact it, come back in with actually, uh, five or six inches of what we call black base, which is asphalt stabilized flexible base, then come in with our, our asphalt. And that'll be a nice street that'll last for another 30 years. So we'll actually go down to the subgrade, stabilize it, build it back up.
Okay.
So what you identified, was it a failure in the way the street was constructed?
The, the, uh, the, the, the difference between the potholes was in the existing flexible base material. I'm not saying that that material is bad, because it, it's lasted 30 years, it's, it's good material. It's just not as strong as the material that we found in the other holes. And where we're, what we're seeing is the streets in the lower right corner are deteriorating at a faster rate than the others, and that is probably the reason.
So this $1 million project, reconstruction, just almost identically to what's going on in the east side of Chavano Park. So in 15 years, when you have to do the rest of Chavano Creek, you will not have to redo this portion of that.
Right.
In theory, because even with this inferior or less than, um, quality base, it's lasted 30 years and done pretty good. So you're gonna get more out of that.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And then what we do in the future is another, with the rest of Chavano is a different problem.
Okay, uh, anybody have any questions, concerns about the first part of this and count, and, uh, staff's recommendation for the balance of the HUD funds that are under consideration? Okay, let's go to the second part.
All right. So, uh, Bill had us, had, uh, extended our assignment and said, I think I've got about 2 million dollars from the 22 bond available, and I want to focus on Chavano Creek, because it's kind of their turn. Uh, and he liked to describe that as this 15-year ma, maintenance cycle between subdivisions. He asked us to provide, you know, what, what options are available, what are the things that we can do, uh, and make us a recommendation accordingly. Next slide. So, uh, the viable street maintenance approaches, in my opinion, are chip seal, HA5, asphalt mills, and, and mill and overlay, and then reconstruction, and I'll go through each one of these, just to make sure you understand what they are. Uh, chip seal is, it's really simple, it's just oil and a rock. They come down with a layer of oil, they put a, a layer of rock on top of it, uh, and it, and it creates a, 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 kind of a rough driving surface, but it really seals up the, uh, the pavement well. Uh, you have a lot of that in, um, Old Chavano West and in Chavano Estates, as you know. It's lasted 20 years, so we know it's a good product, we know it, it lasts well in Chavano Park, so there's a lot going for it, and it's cheap. But, a lot of people don't like the roughness of the surface and how it looks.
Well, a, a lot of people don't like the fact that it doesn't cost the city very much to put it down, but it costs a whole lot in windshield and paint repairs.
Yep. So it, it, it can be an unpopular product, we understand that, we know that. Next slide. Uh, this product is called HA5, uh, it is a high-density mineral bond, uh, it lubricates the asphalt, uh, like we, like we want, and it seals up the pavement for, for water. It results in a very smooth surface, uh, and what a lot of people like about it is it stays black. It's, it's UV resistant, so it, it doesn't oxidize and doesn't turn gray. Uh, one of the biggest downsides of it is it takes 16 hours to cure. So basically, the contractor comes in, he works during the day, and then it, it cures in the afternoon and during the evening hours, and you can't drive on it until the next morning. And so, uh, while this is going on, people have to basically park down the street, and they get shuttled to their homes, uh, using golf carts and what have you. So, there- So there is some inconvenience to the residents on the streets where this work is being done. Next slide. Asphalt mill and overlay, it's real simple. We grind up the existing asphalt, and we haul it off, we come back in with new asphalt. It's smooth, it's long-lasting, people love it, pretty simple. And then the last one is street construction. I described this before, we would basically replace everything between the curbs. We would do a little bit of curb repair where it needs it, but for the most part, 99% of that curb's going to stay in place. The driveways remain undisturbed, and the contractor really can do this fairly quickly. So those were the available maintenance approaches. So we had basically one option with some variations to it. Option A is the chip seal. And the difference between option 1A and option 8A2 is whether or not you mill and overlay some streets, or you reconstruct some streets. And the streets that we're talking about are from, are Cinnamon Oak, from Post Oak Way up to Princeton Oak, basically an extension of Cinnamon Oak that you are considering reconstructing with HUD funds. And then mill and overlay, or reconstruct Post Oak Way from Cinnamon Oak up to Duran Oak, same thing. The rest of the streets would be chip seal, under this option. As you can see, the cost estimate for option 8A1 is about 850,000. Cost estimate for option 8A2 is a little over $2 million. Option B, same scenario, just option B instead of, next slide. Same scenario, except not chip seal, but applying the HA5. And the cost estimate for that, option B1 is about 1.86 million, and option B2 is 2.36 million. That particular option is over the $2 million threshold, you would have to go out and find some additional funding for that. But the remaining options are either at or below your $2 million funding level. Next slide.
Can you go back to one slide?
Sure.
So just kind of also think through this. We won't actually know the exact resolution of what funds we have for a few months, as we get closer to the completion of the east side streets, and then we can get closer to knowing what the accounting is, we can say, hey, we might even have 2.3. We may say, we think we only have 2.2, we go out for bid, and then, and, Tom, if you would characterize how you got to these estimates, and is there a possibility that, like what we did with the $10 million bond, we actually came in because of the competition cheaper? And so there's a, I think there's a possibility that even though this looks to exceed, we may have the funds, and if we don't have the funds, even still, we might be able to then bid it out and then assess it. And just to clarify, we're not asking for a decision today on this. We're socializing this second part, because we have time to work through that, we wanted to introduce you to that, to think, so that you would know that we're thinking of that. But we're going to, we're going to hopefully commit into the federal funding part for Chavano Creek later on, but that's...
So, cost estimates, what's included is the actual construction, 15% contingency, and we put in about 7.5% for engineering. So those costs are all-inclusive. They also include pavement repair, we're in very select areas, where we might have some alligator cracking, or some of that rutting that you saw in one of those slides. So we're going in there, and we're preparing the pavement for these applications, crack sealing, things like that. So it's all-inclusive, we, you know, we like to be a little bit conservative, because I like to, I like to put our clients in a position where they can consider other options easily. If we come in high, the bids come in lower, it's easy to say, hey, we'll continue on our way as we planned, or, hey, we can extend this project now, rather than coming in low and having to decide to cut back or make other plans. So again, we like to be conservative at this point. I'd like to mention something else, between the chip seal and the HA5. Because you have chip seal in this city that has lasted 20 years, I can confidently say that a chip seal will last a long time here. HA5, the recommendation from the manufacturer is seven years. So you would actually have to reapply HA5 in seven years to meet that 15-year cycle that Bill's looking for. I want to make sure everybody understands that. And I did, I have two applications in this spreadsheet, but I just wanted to make sure that you understood that while you were considering this option.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have questions, comments? Conrad?
How many, what's the measurement of this? How many feet of roadway is this contemplating?
There's somewhere between three and a half, three to three and a half miles of road in Chavano Creek.
And that's what this bid is contemplating here?
Yes, yes. Our actual numbers are based more on square yards of material, but that translates into about three, three and a half miles of street.
Lee?
Yes, sir, on this slide we're looking at right now, option B1.
Can you talk into the mic, Lee, please?
Option BHA5, I'm looking at the difference between the B1 and B2, specifically Post Oak Way and B1, 235,500, and in option B, it's a little over double that. And yet, when I look at Cinnamon Oak, 135,500 on the top one, and seven times as much to 981,000, why is it a little over double for one, a little over seven times as much for the second road?
That's the difference between the cost of a mill and overlay and a full street reconstruction.
Oh, okay, okay. One was, one was we're just going to go all the way down to the very, to the clay, and then build it up. They're two different, they're two different approaches.
Yeah, there is, but there's an asphalt mill and overlay on B1 for 235,500.
Okay, Tom, if you, I know what you're saying, Lee, if you look at this, this is the mill and overlay for 235. The full reconstruction is approximately...
A little over double.
Twice that much.
Right.
This looks like it's an era 135, because actually, it looks like it's a longer strip here, and then, but you go down to here, it's, you know, six or seven times the 135. It's not double the 135, it's six or seven. That number seems extraordinarily high compared to, when you compare this one to that one versus this one to that one.
That may be the first mistake I've ever made.
Mine too.
I'll certainly get that corrected.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have questions, comments? I've got a couple. Bill, as we come out on the first topic that we talked about today, we have a requirement under our bonding, not under, under the second project, under the second series of projects, when we took out our 10-year bond, we have to go out and spend that within a certain period of time. Are we going to meet that window? We have to be, we have to spend 85% of the money within three years, or something like that. Okay, just want to make sure that we are in the window.
Yeah, I believe we can, and we can extend that if we need it to as well.
Okay, and I don't know how long we can extend it, but we want to make sure that we don't do anything to affect the tax-exempt status on the bonds. Second question that I have is, we are talking about money specifically related to this, and we're talking about close, and we're talking about close in the idea that it could be off by 10 to 30%, more than the amount of money that we have. And the question is, in order to do a note at that level, because that would be probably the preferential way of doing this under a five-year note, with all the changes that happened two years ago, is that subject to voter approval, or can you just simply do a 1, 2, or $300,000 five-year note?
The Certificates of Obligation Act is where the change was made, you require voter approval. Is that what you're referring to?
So is...
He's just asking a question.
If you do a note, is that the equivalent of a certificate of obligation, or is that just simply a note?
The change was specific to the Certificate of Obligation Act.
Okay, so we do have the flexibility to do a 1, 2, or 3 here, or 100, 200, $300,000 note, without having to go through the process, because $300,000 in the bigger scheme of things is real money to any of us that are sitting up here, but in the overall finances of the community, it's still important, but it's not something that the note service would affect our day-to-day operations, or change our tax rates for that matter. Okay, that was the question. Okay, Bill, do you have any final comments?
No, other than this second portion that he just briefed is...
Not under consideration tonight.
Yeah, it'll be continued, and we'll continue to refine that, and as we get closer, I anticipate we'll bring this back for final approval, an option.
Okay. If there are no more questions or comments, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Recommendation C1A, federally funded street projects in Chavano Creek for inclusion of the federal grant agreement along the Days of Valla road, along with the Days of Valla Road project, which would be to do a rework of Cinnamon Oak to Post Oak Way from Lock Hill to Hubner. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Buddy, we have a second from Maggie, we're now open for There's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries 5:00. Tom, thank you very much for your time today, we appreciate it. Brings us to item 8.3, Discussion Action Phase 1A and Phase 1B Street Projects Update and Approval of Extending Curbs on the East TexDOT Rideaway Zoning District A1. Bill and Chris. Bill, do you want to say anything before Chris gets started?
I think Chris can work through that.
Okay.
I'll help him out if he needs it. You've got a lifeline here.
So construction is progressing well. Wagon trail and ingate are complete, substantially complete. The 300 block of Fawn is substantially complete, Chimney Rock substantially complete, Chavano Drive is substantially complete. I say substantially complete, because we still have to do punch lists, and punch items have to be addressed, but they're like 99% finished. The 100 and 200 block of Fawn, curbs have been installed, and they have placed the first lift of asphalt, all of the type B, four and a half inches. On windmill, they have stabilized the subgrade, and they're installing curbs now. And on Bent Oak, they have begun excavation. Next slide. CPS is still trying to get started on that four-inch gas main that they're extending from 204 Saddle Tree to 412 Cliffside. As I understand it, they had a contractor on board, and for whatever reason, that fell through, so they had to get a second contractor on board. I believe it was Miller Brothers?
It is.
That is going to be doing the work, and we're hoping they start this week, but it may be two or three. But again, I think we mentioned this before, there's no conflict with any of the road work that we're doing, and the residents are paying for that gas service. On the water, Johnny, do you want to give this update?
Yeah, I'll let Johnny come on up here. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. So we're currently working on the cul-de-sacs, we have complete Turkey Creek 100%. When I say 100%, it's man-hours, equipment, time, everything that we're tracking, so we can get that money back from our, Bear County, our funds back. So we're ongoing at Honeybee. When I say ongoing, we've set services in ground, we just got to do some final tie-ins, some final touch-ups. Speaking with Bill today, we're trying not to open up so much earth and not have so much utilities exposed, being that at certain parts, we are running into flint, specifically at Hunter's Branch South, we're running into flint, also Honeybee, we did hit some flint, and we had to rent specific rock saws just to get through that. The flint was taxing on the man-hours that we were out there, so in eight hours, we're probably accomplishing 10 to 15 feet of material moving out. But for the most part, we're looking good on the cul-de-sacs. One cul-de-sac's 100% complete, and the other three are kind of at limbo, we're about 60%, 70% on Honeybee, and about, say, 70% on Hunter's Branch. And Hunter's Branch South, just spoke with the residents out there, and we're coordinating a rock saw to get the rock saw in there, cut through the road, and it's, the rock saw's going to go in, they're going to cut, and that material that they do cut out, they're just going to lay that right back in the trench, and that's going to allow for the operators to come in at a later date and just excavate that material, lay in the new six-inch water main, and tie in the fire hydrant at the end of the line, and that should be, we're hoping by the mid-March, to be complete with all four cul-de-sacs, 100%. And that's including time, material, and everything, and Brenda's office for the end of the month.
Okay. Bill?
Next one?
Oh, Days of Valla, I'm sorry.
No, go back, slide. Since we have it on here, the last portion.
The AC pipe mitigation, we're going to be holding off, so far, we've completed 350 feet in the 240-foot section. The windmill and Bent Oak section, the 1100-foot section, we are going to hold off on that, just because the fact of the AC pipe mitigation, when we were getting rid of it, getting rid of it was, we caught a good break on this time, but actually getting rid of AC pipe, there's a whole lot of rules and regulations that we have to go through and get done, you know, all the proper ways. But luckily, the guy that got rid of it for us, he needed some work, and at the end of the day, we got a really good deal on it, but we're going to hold off a little bit longer on the AC mitigation and replacing of the 1100 feet, just because there's a few steps that we would have to take the next time going around, and we don't want to kind of jump the gun and rush and get into a bind with anything. But for the most part, we feel comfortable with what we did, and the pipe that's in the ground, we'll get to it within the near future. I'm not saying, you know, by the end of the year, it'll be in the future for sure. But that being said, any questions?
On Days of Valla project, which is Phase 1B, we're still at 90% plans, that has been on hold pending the federal grant agreement. As I understand it, with the decision that y'all made on the previous item, Grant, Bill, and Curtis can finish that and get it back to the feds, and once we get that approved by the feds, then we can continue working on finalizing those plans. And then 1C, y'all made the decision on just a few minutes ago. We don't have a slide on it, but one thing I did want to mention was the curbs coming from TexDOT into the Phase 1A streets. We have been coordinating with TexDOT, Johnny's been really leading the charge on that with his contacts over there. We are going to extend the curb so that they do tie into TexDOT, so TexDOT's got a six or seven-inch curb along Northwest Military, I think it's seven feet, seven inch. We're going to transition that over about seven feet to our flush curb, so as it comes around the radius, it'll be transitioning down, and then tie into our flush curb. There are a couple of intersections where TexDOT is raising the road at the edge of pavement upwards of 12 to 18 inches, and so we can't really get started on that curb work until TexDOT lays their base. TexDOT is using SuperPave, and we don't want to mess that up, so it's very close coordination between DND and Dan Williams. So once they go in and place their base, then DND's going to come in and put in the curb right before Dan Williams places the final surface, so you get a nice, clean surface at the end, and it's not marred up by the curb work.
And that asphalt that TexDOT's using, is that another term for being porous? You can pour water, it'll, water will soak through it?
I'll be honest, I'm not real up to speed on SuperPave, I've never used it.
I was talking to Zach and some other folks here recently, and actually, he said that they're looking at maybe starting asphalt, starting from Hubner North in the next couple weeks, and they're moving pretty quick, weather's been real well. Weather's been real well. And I have to confirm this, but I think as part of rumor, rumor would have it, you, you know, it is a porous kind of stuff that it will soak up a certain amount of water, but not just let everything run off of it, but... Okay.
We did, we did set up D and D and Dan Williams. That was a big part of our meeting last Thursday, was actually getting those two in contact. So, Dan Williams is going to get all the coordinating elevations of the, the existing pavement over to D and D as soon as possible, so that way, D and D knows the exact elevations that that curb has to be. So, that way, when they do make that transition, it'll, it'll, the curb will be as close to as possible as flush, so that way, it does look like a ribbon curb all the way up until Northwest Military. That was a big part of getting that all coordinated between those two, because they're two different parties doing two completely different jobs, but one has a piece of the puzzle that the other one does need. So, we did get that, that critical part of the puzzle figured out, so they're in contact currently, and as soon as they, they get that all figured out and they get those measurements, that's when Barry from D and D will come in and get those measurements and stake those places out for them as well, for C4.
Okay, Conrad?
Curious about where maintenance on our side stops and theirs begins at that point that we're talking about, where the ribbon curb meets their curb.
TexDOT maintenance typically ends at their right-of-way. So, a portion of TexDOT is extending their construction beyond their right-of-way because they are elevating the road. They have to transition into your streets, but traditionally, their, their maintenance will be the main lanes and a little bit of the curb return, and then at the curb return, it'll become Chavano Park maintenance.
So, I think there's one piece of rebar that runs in that ribbon curb. Does that go into theirs, their concrete as well, or...
We would have to tie our ribbon curb into their curb. And we'll, we'll dial it in in epoxy.
Any other questions? Thanks, Chris.
All right, thank you.
I know it's eight o'clock. They wanted to think that they, that the poll people needed to come in?
No, yeah, certainly, wrapping up, and then they'll come in.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that. Without objection, I'm going to bring forward item eight point seven. There being no objection. Buddy Lee, do y'all want to start it out? And we'll get some interaction with Bill and with others. Who wants to speak first?
Council Mayor, I know that Chavano Creek had brought up, have, have had a concern with the mailboxes in the area, and looking over it in the overview. We went throughout the whole city, and Chavano Creek is unique only because it is not a gated community like the other HOAs. Both Bentley Manor, Pond Hill, Huntington are gated communities, so we do have a lot of traffic coming through Chavano Creek, and in spite of that, we've had some crime. In that crime, the, we've had, in the community, we've had the pilfering of, of mailboxes, identity theft, and all the associated crimes that go with the, the breaking into the mailboxes. Some of the old mailboxes are the ones where you just pop a lock and you have access to either eight, sixteen, or in some cases, twenty-four different mailboxes. They're not individualized like the, the new boxes are. The new boxes that have come out, you break one lock per person in, in order to access their mail. Unfortunately, the way the laws were written, prior to legislature, like you mentioned last year, the, the police were able to go after theft. Part of that, the, the way the laws were written was the homeowners, when they built these communities, were responsible for the purchasing of these mailboxes, thus the upkeep of these mailboxes. A, a lot of things have changed back then when the post office had money, which they don't anymore. They used to go ahead and, and foot the bill for some of the replacement and the cost of the mailboxes when they were beyond repair. Now, they're going ahead and they have these locks, the arrow locks. They've gone ahead and, and have agreed to replace those just to update them, but that's the extent of it. We do have in the estates, there's over, I believe, eleven, twelve areas that do have mailboxes, and I guess the U.S. Postal Service actually own those. But eventually, the city of Chavano Park is going to have to replace them. There's two, I, I believe, mailboxes on Happy Trail that are totally rusted through and need to be replaced pretty soon. So, yes, it does, it, it does call for conflict within the, within the state regulations. I know that in speaking with, with our city manager, that there are provisions in the law that would allow for us to do certain things as long as we're the betterment of the community. I think that we do not need to limit the allocation of funds just to mailboxes, that we need to take in consideration the purchasing of additional equipment as lighting, cameras, et cetera, because this is a crime that'll continue to, to increase, especially just the way things are nowadays. The theft of one's mail, I mean, is basically stealing part of their lives, and with that theft, I mean, it just leads to other crimes. And I think as a community as a whole, we need to go ahead and allocate money for this purpose. I'm hoping that based on what the attorney's opinion is on whether or not we could provide help in purchasing some of these mailboxes or making some kind of contribution, whether it be through labor, through money, or just future purposes to make it a safer place to get our mail.
Okay. You raised a question for our attorney, and so I'm going to turn to our attorney.
Can we, can we delay that for a second?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Lee, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Voting public out there is aware of this. Question has come up. I'm coming at it from three different directions. Justification of need, cost to this body or the, the city for what is essentially a gated community that chose to be that way, and fairness. I've already had one of the voters out here want to know if their mailbox gets run over by a truck, do we pay for their mailbox? I don't agree with that reasoning. I understand where it comes from, I don't agree with it, but mail theft is an invasion into your life. This old equipment that they've got out there, I've seen some of them. It's, it's, it's nonsense. It's cracker boxes. I'm not sure how much money, if any, we should put into it, but I do recognize the fact that we owe it to our citizens regardless of whether they live behind a gate or not, they're victims, and our job is to reduce their victimhood through that.
At this time, we don't have any cost figures or suggestions for additional items. Do we want to consider this this evening? Do we want to establish whether we have a consensus that we want to go forward on it and that we want to receive a supplemental briefing at the next meeting at which time we can have, we can make a decision?
Mayor, can we just like, I, I think part of what we can achieve today is provide some background and some more information so that we're all on the same common sheet music, and we can confer with our attorney. And then we may then, as you suggest, say, well, let's further develop this. But I do have something I do want to present, coming back to whether this is how, whether funds could even be used for this. So, I have asked Curtis to pull up, you, you have it in your staff summary, but if, if you can pull up the, the, the law under, I don't know if this is a law, but there is, under Texas Constitution, Article 3, Section 52, it doesn't say what you can use funds for, but it does say you would, it would violate the Texas Constitution if, and it lists these three items. So, again, first item is if the expenditure's predominant purpose does not accomplish a public purpose, but instead benefits private properties. So, in the staff summary I provided to you, in consideration whether a city council have any action to reimburse or to purchase or to enhance with security, lighting, and things like that, you know, and I've talked to numerous city attorneys, including Dan, about this, and he can have his own take on this. You must first determine whether or not reimbursement serves as a public purpose. And then, you know, there might be a strong, you may feel very strongly that it serves as a public purpose. You may feel, well, it's marginal, but yeah, I, I can see where it does, but I think that's a decision that city council has to make, and they make it getting guidance and, from the city attorney, he'll tell you his interpretations, but I think that's a decision that you make, and Dan can, could tell me yes or no. And then if you decided yes, just because it's a public purpose, doesn't mean you have to allocate funds, because you can say, well, there's lots of public purposes out there that we don't fund, but you have to ask yourself, is this important enough to whether we want to do this? And then if that answer is yes, then it's how much, and then where do the funds come from?
So, you, you phrase this as reimburse. To my knowledge, none of this has been implemented yet, so it would be a joint contract between the city and the homeowners association, which isn't a reimbursement.
Well, just to clarify that.
They've already done all the work?
Chavano Creek is pursuing that, and it depends, I think it's probably going to depend on how long it takes them to do it and how fast city council does or does not move. I, I think they intend to do it, but it's a pretty significant cost for even a homeowners' association to undertake this. And so, what they've asked for is for us to consider reimbursing that or to, or to jointly help pay.
Yeah, and one is, you made a mistake, and you're asking us for money after the fact, and now it's a completely different option as opposed to being your participant and helping you in the process. So, I, I see that. As far as public purpose, governments have a public purpose in the efficient delivery of the mail. When Chavano Creek was NRETJ, our city fathers saw fit to provide mail service into that area through community mailboxes as opposed to the individual mail delivery that's provided to every other citizen. That serves a public purpose of the safe and efficient delivery of the mail. I don't know if that is sufficient. It's certainly a governmental purpose. It's in the Constitution of the United States that we're going to provide mail services, but Dan is the guy that understands the Texas Constitution better than the rest of us understand the Texas Constitution. And Dan, I don't know if you've actually seen anything like this in your prior experience or whether this is something of first opinion, and frankly, making decisions that are of first opinion are much more dangerous than making decisions that this is a well-worn path and we've done these things before. Dan, do you have, are you prepared to make some comments to us today or not?
So, well, I can make some general comments, and, you know, without, I mean, I haven't, we haven't put up any pictures of where these are located or what they look like or anything like that, so I'm not familiar with, with your mailbox situation. The general rule, though, has to do with whether it's mailboxes, whether it's roads behind a gate, in a gated community, or sidewalks in a gated community, or you name it, whatever it is, if it's, if it's in a private subdivision, the general rule is, yeah, you, the, the city has no role in maintaining or expending funds within a private subdivision.
And, and this is, this is the only subdivision that is not, this is the only HOA that is not in a gated community.
Sure. So, the, the, what the, what the city council has to weigh is whether or not all of your taxpayers should, should, should fund the replacement of this one neighborhood's, whatever it is. And when Bill and I talked about this previously, it's going to come down to, you know, whatever legislative findings this council makes. If you find the public purpose, we will, if you believe there is a public purpose that can articulate it, we can put it into sufficient justifying resolution to support that decision.
And one of the things that Buddy said, and I don't know that you caught on to it, was that there are actually three additional pods that are located in the estates. And so, this is not, you know, this is a question of, well, if there are community mailboxes that are on public streets, do we have a justification? I don't know how many times our police have been called to take care of this. The chief may have that statistic, or it may be something that he has to get back to us, but we are spending additional resources, expending additional resources to take care of this for those community mailboxes. Not that some of our homeowners aren't having the same problem where people are stealing their mail, it's just not nearly as efficient to steal mail at the Warner's House as opposed to going to one of the eighteen pod sites that are in Chavano Park where we have these community mailboxes.
Sure. And the, and the test that is, is there, that's the Supreme Court test, it's a three-part test that, that has been established as far as whether, whether or not you can expend public, public funds in particular situations. And the other, the other aspect of this is, when, when Bill and I first talked about this, is that we'd rather see if the council makes a determination, go down this road and, and finds that this does serve a public purpose, that this be more of a, a, a policy or program as opposed to a one-off for this particular one, because we don't know what other community or what other situation may arise that, that where these types of mailboxes or others need to, I don't know if we know where they're all at or not.
Yeah, do you have that map? Can we show the map?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make one additional comment. Beyond the, once we get over...
Yeah, a little bit closer to the mic.
Once we get, once we, we establish the public purpose, I think we need to go ahead and definitize whether or not the crime prevention mon, money could be allocated directly for this purpose. I mean, just last week, we extended the crime prevention for ten years, and I think that the allocation of funds coming from crime prevention would serve that purpose, but we got to get through the public purpose first.
Yeah, so, if, repeating back for possible correction, if those mailboxes that are in private gated communities, that's very clear, we can't do that. We're looking at, could you go up to the top? Yeah. If you take a look at Huntington, first of all, let me just go back. I'm in touch with the community mailbox coordinator from all of San Antonio. They've been very helpful in, in at least working with the Chavano Creek and the Bentley Manor. I've got some do-outs on, well, what's the, basically, there's three types, I'm going to generalize. There's lots of different brands of mailboxes, but generally speaking, there's the old insecure mailboxes with bad locks. There's the new bo, mailboxes with better locks, but then there's the new mailboxes with superior locks. You can also take a superior lock and put it on a, the middle category, a new box that's got an average lock. Okay? So, when we're talking Huntington, you can probably pretty much guess that they have, and I don't know this, I've asked them for the information specifically, how many of those community mailboxes are new mailboxes with the superior locks? And same thing with Willowood and Pond Hill. We can probably assume, because they're just recent subdivisions, that they have new boxes with superior locks. Now, they did tell me that Bentley Manor, which is in, in, go down there, seven, eight, two, four, nine, they have new boxes with inferior, with the average locks. And she said, well, you know what? I can put a work order in, and I can get those locks all changed in Bentley Manor with the superior locks. I said, you would do that? Well, yeah, we'll do that. We won't replace the whole box. So, there are ways, if you're talking about, okay, how big is this problem? I think we've just solved Bentley Manor. I, I haven't confirmed when they're going to do that, and I'm pretty sure the other ones are either have the upgraded locks, or they will soon. So, now we're really talking, if you go down two, the only other community mailboxes we're talking about are in Chavano Creek and the estates. And then the portion of what, some people refer to the estates, but it's really not Painted Post, Pepper Bush, Ripple Creek. Those were built initially in the first phase and then by the Rogers family, not Bitter Blue, they all have individual mailboxes. So, I have asked specifically what the status of seven, eight, two, three, one is, and, and all along Happy Trail, I mean, there's probably ten of them, and I don't, I'm just making that number up, but I haven't got that information back. And so, that is a piece to the pol, the puzzle that Dan said. If you think it's a, it's a public purpose, or you want to expend funds, then we ought to make it a policy that extends that. Now, if you go to, in terms of specific terms, if you go to the next slide that I have here, which is the, this one here, we do have a cost figure associated with the Chavano Creek. And I can't get you, get you a cost figure associated with the estate. with the estates until I get a current status of what the new and the old one are. And then we do the same thing with the estates that we do here. And so just for general purposes, if Chavino Creek is saying, hey, their total cost is about $35,000, and they've asked for 50%, then you're talking about $18,000, just for perspective. And then there would be another cost associated with the estates if that's what you wanted to do. And, you know, again, I would just offer this up. I'm not saying we should do this, or you have, I'm trying to make sure we have a balanced view, because I do believe that prevention of crime, deterring crime is a public purpose. And then the question of, how do we do it? Because we do expend patrols and resources trying to provide police presence out there, and that's still something that has to be determined, but, and we don't know the total costs associated with it, but again, at least we're introducing the topic.
Yeah, Conrad?
So, whose property is the pod or the mailbox container? Who does that belong to?
They're on Chavino Park's right away.
No, the property, the physical item itself, who does that belong to?
Chavino Park's.
Chavino Park's. So that's Chavino Park property?
It is.
So we're talking about property being vandalized, and I think we're overlapping mail theft into that.
Well, so if there is a theft of the mailbox, that's a crime against that box, whoever owns that. That's owned by the post office.
The mailbox is being vandalized, and then the theft is happening. Those are two separate things.
That's true.
So, like on my side, which is close side, which we have our own mailboxes, I assume that's our property, we have no locks. You just open them up, and you can take whatever you want. But we've had theft over there.
Yes, we have.
So it's mail theft, and then property damage.
I would agree.
So I don't think, I don't think we should cross those over. And so what Betty had suggested before is about a crime prevention aspect. So we certainly don't need a police officer there guarding the mailbox for days on end. That wouldn't make any sense.
Exactly.
So, seems like to me, crime prevention money could be spent on a physical item to save the police.
Yeah, I tried to do some research, and like, okay, I don't have any facts as to new improved locks, what's the percentage of theft, or how many of those get broken into. I did send you some articles, so I copied you some articles that provide general information. I guess if you're a mailbox company, you're wanting to sell in mailboxes, you're going to say that if you buy my mailbox, you're going to deter theft. I mean, I know that. I'm not that dumb. But I, you know, I've looked at some articles that say, okay, how to deter theft from community mailboxes, and one of the first things they'll say is, and there's a whole list, I mean, you can find five prominent things. I don't think I included that article. Number one is, provide improved, secure mailboxes. And part of it is lighting, part of it is, you know, you might put a surveillance camera on it with signage, and then you have to determine which ones of those items actually are the most effective in deterring crime. And I can't tell you scientifically what it is.
Okay, so Bill, what are you looking from council for tonight? Are you looking for us to say, golly, guys, I'd like for me, you know, this came up about 10 days ago or so, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, it was not a long time ago.
Yeah. Are you saying, I'd like for you to come back at the next council meeting with more information so that we can flush this out? But before we even get to there, are you looking for us to nod our heads with enough of us to say, yeah, we want to continue to pursue this issue? I guess that's the threshold question. Do we want to pursue this issue? Not our heads, or not nod our heads?
I'd like to make some comments.
Okay, but, and, but Bill is, but Bill is asking is to come back with more information, because this is at its infancy, and we haven't explored it at the level that I know that you like to explore issues, and that I like to explore issues, and we all like to explore issues. But I'll go ahead, yeah, go ahead and ask your questions, and then we'll come to the next.
All right. So this is more of a comment. As a resident of Chavino Park, I feel violated, and they're not even my mailboxes, right? So the people whose mailboxes that they are must really feel violated. But I do think, because when we look at the mailboxes, you know, I remember growing up, and we never had locks on mailboxes, and mail didn't get stolen. So are we addressing the symptom or the cause? And I think it's more important to be looking at the cause versus the symptom. And I think the cause is that we have people breaking in. So no matter, you know, if you have people that are hell-bent on breaking into mailboxes, even if you put in a better mailbox, they're going to break in, or they'll go somewhere else to break in. So my comment would be, one of the things I would like to see as we move forward is the thoughts from our police department on their recommendations on what they think needs to be done here.
Okay. And that's an excellent comment about involving our police, because they're incremental, instrumental. Maggie?
What I would like to know is-
A little bit closer, Maggie.
By area, what do we know or have any information on what the problem is by area, by type of mailbox? You know, I mean, we know that Chavino Creek is hard hit, but how are the others? How are they lined up with type of mailbox?
We have some information, yes. I'll share that with you after the meeting. I asked Chief to provide that.
Okay.
He gave me some data right before the meeting yesterday, but I will say, or last week, but I will say that I know for a fact that many of the incidents are not reported, and that when we look at what was reported even prior to whenever Chief Fox came, they may not have been actually well-recorded in our city. I'll just leave it at that. Because again, police are typically comfortable with letting the postmaster deal with postmaster stuff, and then the individual, just as Conrad said, the individual crime against the persons, which is the stealing of the mail and that check, you know, police probably deal with that more so than the break-in. My read is that we haven't always wanted to report mail theft in our statistics, because we don't like to do that. That's just me. I think Chief Fox and his team currently do a good job of that, but I don't think that most, I'm not going to say most, many of the mail thefts are not reported. And there is a good number of thefts that are reported on the east side or the west in individual mailboxes. And I have, I have what has been reported in the last two or three years. I'll share that with you. And I do think that's a great idea from Alderman Miller, which is to have the police come in. If we want to deter crime, what are our options to deter crime? And one of them includes upgrading the mailboxes, but there may be others as well.
Conrad?
May I ask, what about our audience members? I can't do that?
No, you can't. Sorry. Just as an anecdotal comment, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Well-
Jeff, we're not recognizing you. We don't recognize people from the audience. Sorry.
But we don't think you are.
Yeah, but you can give it to Bill. Yeah, but you can give that to Bill. But sorry, we do not interact with the audience.
So the other comment is, we need to ask our police department. It seems like a great idea. Like, are the mailboxes in the right place? They could be placed somewhere else. It's less easy, less accessible.
Yeah, and that goes to the global solution that Pete is suggesting for us. Just as an anecdotal comment, I talked to Victor, who is the, who delivers the mail in Chavino Creek to 85% of Chavino Creek, and Victor's anecdotal comment is that places that have secondary security, whether they have the newer mailboxes or the old mailboxes, that the people don't go where there's surveillance cameras and where there's light. They go to places that are the easy places to knock off, because you don't go to the place, you know, you don't, I hadn't heard about anybody breaking into the mailboxes in Chavino Park and at City Hall, because the police station's right here. Only a knucklehead does things like that. But Victor is saying that security is the key. So now we're going to come back, and I think everybody's had a chance to say something. Do we have a consensus? Oh, I asked you at the very beginning, Nick.
Well, I thought of something new.
Okay. Thank you. This was your item, so.
Yes, yes, and I was waiting for a chance to put my three cents in. Part of one of the impetus for doing something along this line is already being explained here, but not emphasized. We've got really great mailboxes in some places that aren't being bothered, and cheap ones that are worn out that are being bothered. If all of them were the kind that nobody's going to bother, then people will not come into Chavino Park to break into the mailboxes and burglarize cars on their way in or way out. I mean, we're taking the sugar cube off the picnic blanket. The ants won't come if there's no sugar cube. So let's get rid of that.
Okay. So at this, and that's a great comment for us to now go to the point of, do we have a consensus to have Bill bring this back at the next council meeting? And everybody is nodding their head that we want to hear more about this. Jeff, Mike, thank you very much for your participation this evening, and we appreciate you bringing this to the attention of the community. Brings us back, we are now going, returning to the regular agenda order. Item 8.4, Discussion Action Ordinance O2023-021, Updating the City of Chavino Park Fee Schedule to Reauthorize Permit Fees, Increase the Water Debit Service Fee, Institute Various New Water Fees, and Minor Amendments to Improve Readability and Consistency. This will be the final reading. Bill, I'm going to recognize you and Johnny. Guys, remember, this is one of our, this is our first of every 10 years, we must reconsider all of our permit fees. And so Bill will be adding this to our permanent agenda on some cycle, just like we consider our attorneys' contracts, we consider our CPA's contracts, we consider our health service contract, and so many others. But this will go on to our permanent review contract on a particular basis. Bill?
Hey, so we looked at fee schedule first in November, and then there was, there was some loose holes in it. We then brought in some amendments. Once Johnny came in and took it to the WAC committee, we didn't have a meeting in December, so we came back in January. And my read is that, generally speaking, most of the new amendments we made from the first reading to the second reading were acceptable, and there was the, there was the debate that occurred regarding the Board of Adjustments fees. And when I say Board of Adjustments, I'm meaning the special exceptions, and the junk vehicle, and all the other kinds of meetings that require attorney and public notice, et cetera. And in the meeting, we had a debate as to what we should raise, should we raise the fees, and what's the logic behind it. And I'm not going to speak for you, but my summary is, well, we ought to charge them more than we're charging now, because we're spending a lot of money on these hearings, and we don't necessarily have to, you know, there would be some, some of you might think, well, everything that we spend on the hearings, we should recoup back in money. And some say, well, no, that's part of the rights that the citizens have. They should be able to apply for a variance, and we shouldn't outprice it so that it's almost practically impossible for them to apply for a variance. We, as a staff, got together, we looked at some other cities and what they do and what they don't do, and we kind of said, well, maybe there's a compromise anywhere about $800, and that's what we talked about. And then part of the debate was, well, are there some of these actions which don't have to have this cost? We don't have to do a public hearing. We don't have to bring the attorney in and pay him or her to do that. Are there options in which we can either provide for an administrative approval or special exceptions to do this? So the item was tabled. That's how I recall. And so we got busy with Dan, and Dan, and Curtis and I, and one of his community planners got together, and we were looking at, and we're still looking at the options in terms of what can we do? Can you write an ordinance that says, under these circumstances, the city manager can approve it, or the building official? And we, just to conclude that, we discovered that some cities could do that, but they're primarily home rural cities, and that Texas has not given us the authorities of the General Law Office to do that. But there still may be a workaround, and Dan and his team are working that. And then we also looked at, well, you can certainly do special exceptions, and those are typically easier than not, is not so much consternation. If you provide for a defined special exception that can be approved, that can probably be done at a lower cost, and we can work through that. So what I'm here to report is, we haven't completely solved that problem, but I don't know, because that is a way to then reduce the number of board meetings you're having to pay for, and then to recoup from that. But I didn't really see whether or not that is going to be, we're going to be able to explore that and propose options for that in terms of, is that going to really make a difference in the Board of Adjustment fee? And so, maybe you, I misunderstood, and there is a direct link between that decision and where, and these fee costs, but I think it was, I thought it was delinked. And so that's why we're bringing it back with really no change to what the proposed fees were, because I think that's, it's important for us to look at, but I think that the proposed fee on Board of Adjustment hearings, special exception hearings, junk vehicle board hearings, and so forth, we've probably, I don't think it's linked to that, but maybe I'm wrong. But I'll pause there.
Okay. Just a really quick question. You look at the two that we had, there's a, the newspaper notices was three times as expensive on the second item.
That's a good observation, Mayor, and that's, and I talked to Kristen about that, and that's because the legal description, that one had three variances, three separate variances that he was asking for exception for. And to put the language in on that-
Why didn't we have him make three different, separate requests, and now we're not stuck having to pay $200 each time for that language that got added?
Well, okay, we did put it in one request. And so if we would have had three different requests, it would have cost us even more.
No, but he would have paid, he would have paid for three application fees.
Yeah. Well, I didn't, I don't, I don't know. He was, he was asking for a variance. He listed the conditions. He listed a side setback, a rear setback, and the distance between the house and the accessory building.
I just don't like paying the newspaper. I don't mind paying attorneys. I've heard nice things about them. I just haven't heard very many nice things.
If we would have done three, it would have been 3,000 times, it would have been three times 860 approximately, probably. It would have cost us a lot more if we'd have done it that way.
Okay. Pete, you had something to say?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. So I'd agree with you. I think the issues are decoupled. I think Dan will work some magic and come back with a solution on the-
A little bit closer to your microphone.
I think Dan will work his magic and come back with a, for a solution on the other item, but I think we should go ahead and pass the ordinances as it's being proposed. So I would like to recommend that, a motion to pass Ordinance 0-2023-021, Updating the City of Chavino Park's Fee Schedule to Reauthorize Permit Fees, Increase the Water Debit Service Fees, Institute Various New Water Fees, and Minor Amendments to Improve Reliability and Consistency.
And readability and consistency. Okay, and this is a final reading. Do we have a second to that motion? If we leave a second in the motion, now we're now open for discussion. There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries 5-0. Do you all want to do 8.6 or 8.5 first, Bill? Which one would you prefer?
8.5, because I think, you know, you'll still be somewhat attentive and not getting tired, and 8.6 is a good idea, so let's let Johnny come up and-
I was thinking that Johnny would have less time with us, because we're all looking at the clock saying, hey, Johnny, you've got 20 minutes you can talk, but if we do this other items-
He's made it easy for you, because he's got PowerPoint slides.
Okay.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. Next slide, please, Curtis. So, I was hired July 26, 2023. Upon hiring, we are required as directors to do an assessment of our departments. So my assessment- So my assessment, my assessment consisted of public works, equipment, personnel, training, and also our town plan. I started out with streets. Streets were something that was put on my list. And I, I looked at the town hall plan, reviewed it with, with myself and Jesse to see where we're at. When I came in, it was, y'all were running a hundred miles an hour, and I had to catch up. And it took me about three or four months, everything else, before that was a blur. And it was fun to, to learn as much as I did in the short time span that I was, that I'm here. So I started out with the street bond project. There was two different funds of money that I had to learn what went where. So it was the street bond project, and it was also the federal grant, which we spoke on both of them tonight. The Days of Allah project is the, the federal money with, that goes into the Chavano Creek area, which was a great, you know, learning tool that I had to learn it with, on both sides of it to be able to not only speak with you guys about it, but to be able to speak with Bill fluidly about it and, and et cetera, with, with those two topics there. Also, continuing to build a preventative maintenance program for our streets. I think we have fair streets. I do think that preventative maintenance program is going to allow us to get the most amount out of our streets possible, getting, getting the extended amount of life as possible, as the engineer did say. Some of our roads are older, but they're still in fair condition. And a preventative maintenance program would be great to extend the life of our roads. Next slide, Curtis, please. Also, heavy equipment, as you can see in the photo, that's a picture of Frank, our, our water supervisor. The photo was taken, it was about forty-three degrees outside and it was raining. And we're picking up a pallet. So the background of that is, we do have a backhoe currently speaking. It's in good condition. I'm not going to say that it's not, but I will say it is open cab. That leaves the operator open to all the elements that are out there, whether it's cold and raining, like it was in this photo, or super hot. The problem that I have with, with open cab backhoe is when it is cold and rainy and that operator has to operate those joysticks, you tend to lose, you know, feeling in your hands, and that's pretty dangerous for the people standing around the hole. The operators that are trying to guide them to do the right things or move that machine in all the right ways. And if you can't feel your hands very well, then, you know, you can't really operate that machine to the top of your performance. So we're also moving that machine from one point to the other throughout the whole city. And that operator, like I said, whether it's cold, wet, rainy, or we're, we're carrying material in the front bucket there. I was doing that today, driving down Northwest Military. Dust and dirt's just hitting you in your eyes. It doesn't matter whether you have a goggle on or a full face shield. That dirt's still going to hit you, it's going to cause you to impede your driving skills and, and, you know, I don't want to cause an accident. So the, the machine is in good condition, looking in the future to get in a closed cab backhoe with an extender hoe. An extender hoe would allow for the operator to get a few extra feet of reach, whether it's setting a fire hydrant or moving a piece of equipment or pipe and material into a better position. Currently, we just have an arm on it that doesn't extend out, and it does impede the operator on being able to get full effect functionality of that equipment there. Also, I put a front end loader on there. That's, that's predominantly a want, it's not a need, but it's a great need. I think every municipality should have one. Five years ago, in November, I was a part of a tornado in Florisville. Luckily, we had two front end loaders, and I kid you not, those things ran for twenty-four hours, nonstop. When, when something like that does happen, you don't tend to realize how much stuff goes flying around everywhere. And I'm talking about from bricks to houses, to bricks to buildings, to two thousand pound limbs and three hundred old oak trees that are just now laying in the middle of the road. Currently, we don't have anything that can actually grab that, that type of material that would be laying out in the street and actually get it out of the roadways. Being able to clear roadways is a big thing in, in, in some sort of a disaster like that, not only for public works, but for the, the residents and for our first responders, you know, whether it's a car accident or a fire that happened because, you know, a tree limb decided to fall on a transformer. Being able to have those roads cleared and everything open is detrimental in those types of situations. But also in our day-to-day operation, like our well site four, we, we're currently using it as a holding station for all of our material. Our backhoe's good, but it's also small, it's a small front end loader, it's a small front bucket. Having a front end loader will allow us to fluidly move an excess amount of material and getting that material off the yard and into an eighteen wheeler hauling that off, keeping our, the, the limited material yard that we do have kind of always clean and always able to be utilized. Next slide, please. Public Works Equipment Yard, we have a great yard. I, I told Bill when I first got here, man, you've done a great job on it. But I did get here in the middle of the summer. And I will say, when I first got into the office, there was dust and dirt everywhere. I mean, cakes of it. We were, I literally went through a whole roll of toilet paper just to get my office desk somewhat non-dusty. And it's a continuous battle from here on out. Currently, the road is just, it's gravel and dirt. So whether it's raining outside, we're tracking in mud, or whether it's, it's just dry and dusty, when we are moving material around in that yard, we do end up having to spin those, those pieces of equipment around, kicking up dust. And it does cause for all of our air filters to frequently have to be changed. And not only just our heavy equipment, but are also our utility trucks that sit there day-to-day. They're always covered in dirt. I think if we were to pave that, that little area there, that'll allow for our materials, or not our material, but our equipment to have a longer life for, for years to come. Not only that, but I think it'll benefit our residents that do live butted up against us. It's, it's kicking up dust and going over to their side. And I'm surprised they haven't said anything yet, you know, because it's, it's a lot. It's a lot of dust and a lot of dirt. Also, maybe putting in a wash bay for future, being able to wash off our equipment, our filters, our, keeping our, our equipment and our, and our trucks somewhat presentable for our, for our residents and for our guys to be safer. And I think a clean truck speaks volumes when you don't have nothing rolling around and you have somewhat of a clean truck to get to and get around. You don't have to worry about cutting yourself or anything on some old piece of metal. You know what your truck has when it's clean. Next slide, please. Backup generator, currently, we do have a backup generator at well site eight, but that is the only backup generator, it's a driveshaft generator. It does, it does help produce water. That's our number one goal, is, is making water, to allow for our residents to have ample amounts of water, no matter day, night, power outage, what have you. So currently, well site eight is our only well that does have a driveshaft connected to the wellhead. We also have one at Heebner, they, two different functions, two completely different functions. Heebner sends water up to our elevated storage tower and over to our residents. But what we really need also is to be able to produce water at all times. If you don't have, if you can't produce water, you're not going to be able to use that driveshaft over at the Heebner Ground Storage Tank. So well site seven does not have a, any kind of generator. I'd like to put, you know, focus on putting one in there to allow us, just in case, you never know, with well site eight goes down, we can't get the generator started for some form or fashion, and it is older. Putting a brand-new one in there and allowing our guys to be able to do routine maintenance on it and actually have it at their fingertips. I know that we do have some contracts with vendors that do allow us to rent it out. But we took, we recently took a class, a resiliency training class, and part of the resilience training was, yeah, you may have contracts and negotiations with vendors that do rent, but if that road's icy and everything's wet or everything's flooded in, I don't care who you have on a rental program, they just can't get you that piece of equipment. Talked about, you know, maybe having to Hilo in a, a generator. They said that's, that's, that's something that's had, that's had to be done for other municipalities, just so they can get actual drinking water to their residents. So to avoid all of that, in the, in the future, I would like to put a generator over at well site seven. So well site eight produces fifteen hundred gallons per minute. Well site seven does about fourteen hundred gallons per minute. They're our two biggest producing wells throughout our whole distribution system. And I, and I feel like having a generator at both of those locations would definitely be an ace in our back pocket to be able to have for all of us to be able to say that we can produce water. It's not without, in the, in the realm of, no, we couldn't because of well eight went down. No, we have well seven, and it's always better to have a backup than anything. Also, put it in either a VFD or a soft start. Currently speaking, we don't have a VFD or we don't have a soft start. So when that electricity turns on, I mean, you are, it's like getting in your car and it's thirty degrees outside and you want to turn that thing on and drive a hundred to fifty miles an hour down the road. It's not good for anything. It's not good for belts, it's not good for motors, it's not good for pumps down hole. So actually putting something in there, like a soft start or a VFD, it'll allow it to slowly ramp up, get, get water actually producing, and slowly ramp down. So currently, what we're, when you turn it on and the demand for water calls, you're getting hit with a full load of electricity to get everything running. So putting in a soft start or a VFD would be detrimental, and, you know, I think it's critical in this situation here. So we'll do that in the near future. Also, Heebner Ground Storage Tank and Well Site One. Heebner Ground Storage Tank, we've, we're keeping, we kept a close eye on it, and luckily, we did find some surface rust up on top. We caught it early, it's just surface rust, it's not nothing critical. I worked with Bill very in-depth about actually getting that taken care of, so he, he put it on top of my priority list. So we're currently working on a RFP to get that worked on and get it, get it going and actually get it, that rust mitigated and taken care of and put it in, keeping it in service at a hundred percent. Lord willing, we, we don't have to take it out of service, but that's in the realm of possibility. But it's looking like, right now, we're not going to have to. We'll do like a, a liquid wash with sand, and we can keep it in service and re, re, re-prime it and repaint it, and that, that ground storage tank should be back a hundred percent. Also, Chavano Park.
Go back one.
Chavano Park Ground Storage Tank, we're currently erecting scaffolding today. As of today, we started putting scaffolding together at well site, at well site one's ground storage tank. We did a tank inspection, which we do annually. We looked back on the last three, two years of tank inspections, and it's just starting to occur this year, where the rust is starting to get really bad over on the air vent side of it. So the air vent allows water to fluctuate up and down and relieves the air that's in the tank itself. So we're looking to get it inspected this week and see if there's any kind of further damage within the inside of that bolted tank. So it's a bolted together tank, typically have a twenty-five-year lifespan in those tanks. We're right at about twenty years on that tank itself. But draining it today, I'm pretty positive that they're going to be able to fix just the air vent itself. It's just finding the proper places that they can cut that metal out and weld some new joists and be able to find some fresh metal and weld it onto there. Next slide, please.
Let me talk to you.
Okay.
The Heebner was a problem I inherited in two thousand thirteen. They said, fix, fix the paint because it was all peeling off. I think we painted it twice. And then it was like, okay, until we sandblast it, get to the primer, put the right stuff on, we're always going to have this problem. And my guidance to the Public Works Director is, every year we have a inspection. As long as there's no rust, I'm okay with it. But this year, and that inspection results came about a month prior to Mr. Peterson leaving. Okay, and so it came, and then it may have, may not have been read initially. Johnny came on board, and then eventually it was read. And then, wow, we do now have surface rust, kind of for the first year, on the Heebner tank. We got to get that fixed because we don't want that to get worse. I put it on my priority list as like number two item, right, right below the, the grant, and directed him to do the same. In the well site one ground storage tank, it's a smaller one that was originally done for the Trinity. That has shown some outside rust, surface rust, minor, maybe for the last couple of years. And then, two years ago, there was a little bit of rust on that vent that we're talking about. This year, that report comes in, and it's like, wow, we have a big, we have a pretty big problem. And since the report, the inspection was done about April, May last year, further inspections in basically just January, when Johnny told me, let's go look at this, and we started looking at that, it's rapidly deteriorating. So I just want to make sure we pause here because that was this, this one we've been, our eye watching, this Heebner tank. The other one, which is only like fifteen years old, like fourteen years old, maybe thirteen, shouldn't, in our minds, shouldn't have been rusting. And then all of a sudden, we had this big problem. And because it's bolted in, it's, it's bolted in with bolts, panels that were put together, it's problematic in trying to repair those, more so than just spot repairing another one. The whole bottom line to that is, we've drained it last week, we put scaffolding in today. We're going to do an RFP, and we're going to have three or four firms come in and say, can you repair it? What's the cost? We'll get bids on that. But it's possible that they could all come back and say, you need to replace this tank. And so I just want to make sure that's very clear. I don't think that's why, we, we don't want to have to replace it, but, you know, that's, that's one of the things that I don't want to be escape in our, in our rush to get through this agenda item. I thought that was important.
Thank you, Bill, I appreciate that. Next slide, please. Our distribution system was the next thing I inspected. I did, did some, some research on. So we're currently working on getting a water model for our distribution system. That's in the process. We're kind of checking off some last-minute items and some boxes that we need to turn in to the firm. And lo and behold, within a few months, we should get our hands on some sort of water model software that we would be able to actually utilize and put to use in, in, in the aspect of being able to simulate certain things within our distribution system, whether it's, hey, we want to see what we have to do to utilize or get more pressure over on one side of town and see what we got to do over here to reduce pressure if they're getting too much pressure. Utilizing the water model, we'll be able to make those educated decisions instead of just possibly just going down a rabbit hole of saying, hey, I've only got a four-inch main over here, I want to make it a six-inch, I want to make it an eight-inch. Because possibly doing that, I can possibly go down the wrong rabbit hole and actually be decreasing pressure over on a different side of the distribution system. So I want to be able to use that water model to make an educated decision on what pipes we're actually going to be replacing or what we're going to be upgrading throughout our distribution system. It'll also allow us to make an accurate CIP, a capital improvement plan, and be able to go continuing to work with our town plan, you know, trying to take the CIP and marrying it to our town plan and making sure that we're going down the right path and continue to take the city into a great direction. Next slide, please. We currently looking at getting a mini dump. We did have, we were budgeted for a stakebody truck, but due to the direction that the department's going and all the, the bigger projects, and we're taking on bigger projects than most municipalities that are bigger than us, believe it or not. I mean, I, I say this all the time, and, and I mean it, is Chavano Park punches well above their, with their weight class when it comes to installing infrastructure. Most cities contract out about eighty-five percent of the work that, that, that gets built in, and we're doing it in-house. We're saving the city an astronomical amount of money. And not only that, but we're building great operators for the future for our city. Being able to educate the young ones that are in here and actually advance the guys that are already in place to be able to get further knowledge of our distribution system. But that being said, the stakebody truck wasn't really going to benefit us in any way other than maybe being able to transport things like pallets of water, et cetera, from one location to the other, barricades. The mini dump's going to allow us to still continue to take care of the workload that we're taking on now again and being able to take care of our day-to-day operations. The truck will be equipped and strong enough to be able to haul our Backtron, our truck and, our trailer, our twenty-foot trailer with equipment, and be able to give us another tool that's going to constantly be utilized opposed to a stakebody truck. But that's already budgeted for, we're currently shopping around, but it's, it's tough with the economy, the way it is, with trying to buy a vehicle. But we are working with by-board and other, and other programs to see if we can get the best deal possible for the city and not have to cost the city little to no money because the, the item was already budgeted for. Next slide, please. Currently, there isn't really a strict training program for public work, so we're looking to revitalize that and create one. Creating a strong program that'll allow for job-specific training to be able to send our, our operators that work in kind of road construction more, send them to a flagger course, being able to send our water operators into safety for chlorine maintenance, being able to have them extensively trained on both ends of that. And I think it'll, it'll allow for a more successful department. I think our department's great, but we can always get better. I speak the world of our Public Works Department because they're good, but we can always get better. Next slide, please. Leadership, there's currently three leadership roles within the Public Works Division. It's the water supervisor, the superintendent, and myself. I would like to, to send us to leadership training that does pertain to strictly public works and water. I think that getting knowledge and, and passing that on to others is key in our, in our, in our community of public works. It's, you know, the sharper that we are, we're able to train people that are in our ranks to be able to fulfill our positions in the future. I think that being able to train the, the leaders for the future within our department is, is critical, and that's a, it's a great program that, that breeds success. I'm already kind of trying to start that. I, I had our water op, one of our water operators, Juan, he took on a project by himself, a hundred percent. I said, hey, Juan, you're going to be taking on Hunter's Branch. I don't want, I don't want Frank to give you any guidance nor advice. I want you to quarterback the job from the ground up. I want you to organize. I want you to quarterback the job from the ground up. I want you to organize how much pipe do you need? I want you to organize the pieces of equipment that we need to have, the personnel, where do you want them to be? I also want you to operate the Mini X. Uh, those were all, uh, Mini Escavator and those are all critical tools that he would need to be successful as a leader, to not have to ever question his ability to know that he has that tool to be successful. Whether here or other places, but I would love for our operators to move up into the ranks once, you know, I, I retire, once Jesse retires and once Frank retires, I would like to be able to breed that kind of culture to be able to just bring in people and our, continue our success for years and years to come, um, even well after all of us are gone. Uh, next slide please. Um, that brings me to hiring another operator. I think one operator is, is more than enough, uh, to help us out with, in any form or fashion when it comes to working. Uh, like we are continuing to work on bigger jobs. Uh, so a bigger job that, that, to me, it consists of setting a fire hydrant, laying new water main, uh, continuing to upgrade cul-de-sacs and water lines and, and within our distribution system. Uh, typically on a job site, you have a backhoe operator. You have two guys in the hole that are assembling and, 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 and building parts and fittings. And, uh, we also got a guy outside the hole. He's typically running from one point to the other, handing the guys all the tools that they need, uh, making sure that the operator's not jumping in and out of the hole. Well, we, we operate in that form right now, currently speaking, but that does leave one other person in the Public Works Division that's typically operating and taking care of any kind of fires that are happening, whether, hey, we got a sprinkler system that broke or we need line locates done for an emergency on the other side of town or somebody hit a deer and, um, they need to pick it up and put it in the back of the truck. Some items, some items that do come up require two people and when we're doing a big job, it's kind of hard for us to separate one of the guys because he may be in the middle of a job, a big job. And, uh, having another operator out there would ensure that we have two guys that were in the Public Works Department and they would be able to float around and get things done in a safe manner and be able to communicate and get everything done within, within the right realms of all the duties of Public Works. Um, next slide please. All right, to conclude, um, I must say this is, you know, I'm very proud to work here. I, I, I don't consider Public Works or doing anything here a, a job. It's, it's, it's a, it's a life for me. I love what I do, but coming here was very difficult. Um, it was, uh, I didn't realize how fast the truck was running, you know, when I got here and, uh, like I said, my first three months were a blur and I wouldn't have been successful and I wouldn't be standing here today if it wasn't for the team that I had in the Public Works Division. Uh, they sat by my side, uh, Jesse and Frank, uh, especially. And, um, they taught the rookie in charge, you know, kind of what was going on, what was happening, um, proper protocols, procedures. Hey, uh, simple things like from, hey, we got to have our time sheets turned in on this day. You got meetings at, at every, every Monday at nine that you need to be prepared for. You know, you got priority lists that you need to get and you need to have set up for because those were standards that Chavino Park had that I, I never had to, had to deal with. And, uh, these guys brought me in. They welcomed me with open arms and, uh, I wouldn't be standing here and talking to you guys if it wasn't for them. I mean, also in the director level, um, every single one of these guys sitting here, I know that I'm boring them, but I, I thank every single one of them, from Brenda to the chiefs, to HR, uh, even Bill. Um, Bill continues to change me. Uh, Bill, Bill continues to train me. I mean, I, 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 I say this all the time is, you know, I, I got a great city manager, you know, he's, he's helped me polish all the areas of my career where I needed to get better at. Uh, when I got here, uh, I have my faults like everybody else does, but this man took me under his wing and, and he's going to make me a better director and a better operator and a better, a better leader for the teams that we are leading in the future. Um, also your, y'all's directors, they, they welcome me with open arms and all my flaws and I give them, I feel like the, the stepbrother that just gives them all the problems, but they're, they, they help me solve them, you know? But thank you guys and thank y'all too. I appreciate you guys. But that concludes my presentation and you guys got any questions?
Thank you, Johnny. Uh, before I go to the council members, I, I want to commend you for recognizing Brenda first because by golly, we all know where the rubber meets the road and that's with Brenda. Um, also, uh, we're very proud to have you with us. Uh, you've been a wonderful addition to the team. You've got a great attitude. And I always get, enjoy getting to see you and I know that the members of our community enjoy the positive and friendly attitude that you bring to every project that you're supervising here in Chavino Park. So with that,
Thank you, sir.
Do we have other questions and comments, concerns from other council members? Pete?
So you talked about the town plan. You talked about the modeling. You talked about leadership. Uh, and you talked about making sure you have the right equipment. You hit it out of the park for me.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Lee?
Uh, first of all, I can know where you found that photograph of wood wire-wound water main.
That's from the city of Savin, of San Antonio. Those are some of their Cypress original pipes. They still have them downtown in places.
At the museum, I, I've seen those in a, in an actual fireplace.
It was a cool photo. I had to put it in there. I'm sorry.
And the, the welder you used for generator photograph, that's kind of interesting too, but um, I'd like to say that in a lot of cases, the new guy wants to fit in and not stand out. You've done both, sir. You, you fit in and you stand out and are outstanding. I want you to know, I've, I've worked with several uh, in your job position and other places and, uh, you're keeping it steady. You're keeping it right. And I really appreciate the job you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Conrad?
Well, I was going to bring up the water pipe because that was, I was wondering what street that thing's on. I appreciate the leadership part of this and really that's, it seems like what you're talking about was education, which is every bit of leadership and, and how that is, um, always important to do. It helps, at least my opinion, it helps people get up in the morning and face another day, to try to learn something new and take on some more responsibility. I think that's really important for everybody.
Thank you, guys.
I think that, I appreciate, uh, the cross-training. That gives them a new horizon to, to look at and where they maybe didn't think, you know, uh, that was possible, but it, it brings, uh, education to them and, and, uh, uh, I, I appreciate the things that you have brought to Chavino Park and thank you and thank you for the little pothole.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Buddy?
Johnny, thanks for everything you've done. I, I, uh, want to applaud you especially for rec- recognizing your staff underneath you, bringing them up along the way and that your recognition for them. And again, we appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you guys.
Johnny, thank you very much. Bill, do you have any final comments before we let him go? Okay, uh, this brings us to item eight point six, discussion action, approve the purchase and installation of four radar speed signs in Northwest Military Drive to draw greater attention to speed limits and safety. Pete?
Yeah, so the road construction on Northwest Military is scheduled to end, uh, sometime, hopefully mid-year twenty twenty-four, maybe, maybe sooner than that. But as that gets completed, one of the things I think we're going to see is the increased flow and traffic through there. And is that traffic increase that brings with it the potential of risk? So what I'm, what the motion here proposal is, is that we purchase and install four radar speed signs on Northwest Military. And again, the, the reason why is to reduce the risk potential of accidents that jeopardize the safety of residents that live on Northwest Military.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to, uh, purchase and install four der- four radar speeds, speed signs targeting installation completion before the end of May twenty twenty-four. Do we have a second? Leah, second in the motion. We're now open for discussion. Conrad?
Uh, I think I like the idea. I just, um, I'm not sure if we want to put them too close to where it says Chavino Park on our. That's the only thing I got on.
Okay, Buddy?
No, I have no questions.
Maggie? Lee?
How much are they?
About twenty-five thousand dollars is what he says.
Yeah, for the purchase and installation.
Uh, combined.
And if you approve this, then we'll come back in our budget amendment, maybe look at options for how to fund it and, but I, I don't see any problems with funding it.
How does our police department feel about this?
Chief, would you like to comment?
This is actually, uh, an idea that we're going to propose in our budget, uh, either this year, this coming fiscal year or the next fiscal year. It was all dependent on the Northwest Military road construction being completed first because we already have four of the signs up on Dezavala and Lock Hill and, uh, they've proven to be success so far. We haven't had as, um, any incredible incidents to report from. Um, I can tell you that the price proposal that we have for the ones on Northwest Military are the same for the ones that we already have existing. So we're already fluent on how they go together and so forth. Um, I do know too that, uh, I'm experiencing a couple of issues with them now, uh, uh, on two of them that, uh, may need some, uh, uh, repairs, but it's been three and a half years and we've had not any incidents, um, with them, any hiccups or anything in those three and a half years. And the miniscule, uh, cost for that support is about a third of what each sign is, so, um, I think they're very budget-friendly.
Well, I think you've done a great job with those in the past and it sounds like great minds think alike. Lee?
I'd like to point out the fact that, uh, you having trouble with one or two of those signs is to be expected. The brutal summer that we just came through not only faded all the stripes on all the highways in the state of Texas, down to where you have to guess where your lane starts and stops, but it also destroyed traffic signals, crosswalk signals and those signs. They're susceptible to heat and they've been out in an oven for this entire year.
Solar, and so they're solar, solar battery powered as well. And so those batteries take a hit after time. So the fact they've lasted this long speaks pretty highly of them, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now, now, you know, we're ready to take a vote, Pete, and it sounds like you've got a win. Do you really want to take a chance of adding something else? Oh, okay, okay. Uh, if there are no further questions, comments or concerns, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries five oh. Okay, this brings us to item eight point, uh, eight. Possible executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code five five one zero seven two deliberations regarding release of attorney-client privilege personnel investigation findings. Uh, do I have, have a motion to retire to executive session?
So moved.
We have a motion from Maggie, a second from Pete. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Uh, we're, it is now nine thirteen and we're going to go into executive session. Oh, nine thirty-six. We were returning from executive session held pursuant to Texas Government Code section five, five one zero seven four, attorney-client privilege communication. Uh, no votes were taken, no action was taken. Uh, we are now proceeding to item number nine. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
He has made a motion to adjourn. Conrad has seconded the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five oh. We are adjourned.